Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Shane Hall is with First Southern Baptist Church. He's going to lead us in the invocation. I'll make note that Councilman Stone attends that church and knows Shane very well. I'll ask Councilman Stone if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance following the invocation. Would everyone please stand right now?
Let's pray. Father, we come to you today on this beautiful day you've given us and just love the day and the creation that surrounds us as we reflect upon it, we reflect upon your glory, and we thank you for that. Father, I lift up each member of this council today. I lift up our mayor, and Father, I ask that you provide them wisdom that comes from you that the decisions that they would make today would not only be decisions that are made in the best interests of this great city, but also in accordance with your desire and your will. Father, I want to also in a special way lift up the members and the families of each person here, each member of the council. Father, these family members, husbands and wives, children, grandchildren, willing to give up time away from them as they do this work, so we just thank you for that and ask for special blessings on them today. Bless these proceedings and bless the decisions that are made. We give you all the praise and glory, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, among nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call the meeting to order. Item 3 is from the office of the mayor. It's a series of appointments. I'll look for a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. We're on item 3A, passage unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the journal for July 5th, and 4B is to approve the journal for June 20th. Is there a motion on the journal?
Yeah.
All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 5 is a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a few this morning, starting on page 23, page 23 under item 9G1, D 1204 Northeast 18th Street, we ask that be stricken. We need to re-notify the owner. Item H 3427 Northwest 50th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has removed. Moving to page 24, under item 9H1, item A 5016 Briarwood Drive, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item C 1112 North Douglas, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Item I 11900 Royal Coach Drive, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Item N 117 Southeast 21st Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Item AA 2629 Southwest 45th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item AF 300 Southeast 52nd Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. On to item 9I1, item A 1112 North Douglas, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Item F 11900 Royal Coach Drive, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Item K 117 Southeast 21st Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Item T 2629 Southwest 45th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has removed. And finally, item Y 3427 Northwest 50th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has removed.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? No revocable permit requests today, so we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are seven items on the MFA. Is there a motion?
No.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Three items.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the PPA. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just two items.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on the EAT. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Yes, if there's individual considerations.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, I'd like to ask if we could vote on item AM2 separately.
AM2, all right.
And I did just want to mention a 7P.
Okay.
And Mayor, we do have a presentation this morning on the convention center. That's item AZ.
All right, let's go ahead with the presentation on the convention center.
Great. Todd Wolf is here this morning from Populous and Adam to give us an update. This is the 60% drawings that are before us. Is Adam going to start?
It's good to see everybody. I'm waiting for the clicker. So yeah, so as Mr. Couch said, we just submitted our 60% drawings. With our 60% drawings, that comes with a 60% cost estimate, which is exciting, to say the least. And so we, it's been a long time coming, but as I said, we're really excited. And so this is actually a presentation that we gave to our subcommittee in the month of May, and it was addressing some issues that came up in our preliminary report submission. One of those issues was obviously costs. The other was traffic and circulation. So we have Luke Schmidt from Kimley Horn here to address traffic concerns around the site. We have a proposed solution that we think we've all agreed on, but we obviously would like your feedback and any opinions you have on that. And then also the potential for an elevated pedestrian connection from our facility to the potential hotel development. And I know the Omni team is here as well, so it's fitting that we're discussing this today. So a quick update, again, we always run through our design principles with our subcommittee. And I know the park is under construction right now, and there's a lot of land moving around, so it's great to see a lot of these things that we've been talking about for years now starting to come to life. And so, you know, as far as where we're at with our drawings, the 60% set is fully coordinated with all of the appropriate civic bodies around the area, from police to fire. The building operator, SNG, is providing meaningful feedback. And then, of course, continued coordination with our MAPS 3 team, our subcommittee, and the Citizens Advisory Board. So I think it's safe to say that everybody that's been involved up until now is comfortable with where the design is at and where we're moving, except for these few outstanding issues which we hope to get to resolution on today. So project budget, so this is our 60% budget, and this is our 60% estimate. This is the one that's going to carry us to final plans, because nothing in the building is really changing right now. We're just really documenting details and how we're going to move forward. So the project budget is actually $194 million for construction. Our latest estimate has come in at 191.9. So we're actually a little bit under budget, and we're a little bit under budget because there's a few things that we've established, some internal things in the building, to pull that out as add alternates, just in case if the building goes to bid and it comes in a little high. We don't foresee that happening, but we wanted to develop a pathway to make that happen. So right now, with all of the add alternates, we're actually in budget, but as you see the spreadsheet up there, there's a few things that we've pulled out just to be safe. So again, the things that aren't in our budget are the parking garage to the south, 4th Street, and the potential bridge. But again, that's not in our base scope of work. So everything in the building, in our initial scope, is, we can safely say it's in budget right now. And so again, we'll be refining this estimate as we submit our final plans here at the end of the month, or at the end of August. The building layout hasn't exactly, hasn't really changed at all, so I can flip through these really quickly. And we went ahead and updated our set of renderings just to reflect the current status of the drawings. So these are actual renderings from our current architectural model. So I think you can see that the design integrity of the building hasn't really changed much through the course of this process. So again, the views from Robinson, the park, looking south on Robinson again, looking north. And this is actually a view that we created, a modified aerial view, where you can start to see the development along Robinson in the aerial. So vehicular traffic, vehicular circulation and traffic. When we presented preliminary report, we presented three options, and this was mainly addressing traffic moving north and south on Robinson Boulevard. We presented three options. One was the ability for traffic to come south on Robinson and perform a U-turn to go north. The other was the potential for a roundabout on Robinson to allow for traffic to circulate around the roundabout and head north. And the other one was to make a left turn at 7th Street, circulate around the surface parking lot, and head back north on Robinson. So I'm going to let Luke come up and explain a little bit of the data and the findings and how we came to this recommended solution of a roundabout on 7th Street. So Luke.
Thank you, Adam. Let's talk a little bit about the roundabout concept. So at Kimley Horn, we were tasked with looking at both a location and a potential design for a roundabout. As you can see in the concept, from a location standpoint, we landed on southwest 7th Street at Robinson. The reason for that is 6th Street had some inherent challenges with the potential expansion of the convention center, as well as the fountain at the park to the west. So 7th Street was the location that we felt most appropriate for a roundabout concept. From a design standpoint, a single lane roundabout was appropriate from a traffic capacity standpoint, as well as the context of the area. Larger roundabouts are not as pedestrian friendly, so we felt that this was appropriate for this, for a single lane roundabout at this location, as well as from a traffic capacity standpoint, a single lane is adequate for the forecasted traffic that we forecast. From a design standpoint, the single lane concept will be able to accommodate large tractor trailers, school buses, and other large buses or tractor trailers. So this concept shows a little bit of what we're looking from a design standpoint, but with that, I can entertain some questions in regards to the concept for the roundabout.
Go ahead, David. Thank you. Okay, so my big complaint about the existing roundabouts here in Oklahoma City are that they're too small. You know, if you compare the roundabouts to major cities, they tend to flow better, but because ours are so compacted, people end up having to stop, you know, as they approach a roundabout, as opposed to a smooth merge into the roundabout. So I'm not suggesting this has multiple lanes. Single lane's fine. I'm just saying, is it going to be large enough to where there's a smooth merge of traffic into the roundabout as opposed to the existing ones we have here, like on 10th and Walker, 10th and Lee, I think, or Chertel, and some of the others that we have.
Yeah, that's a great, sure, that's a great question. You can see from the exterior diameter, we're at 120-foot diameter, which is fairly large for a single lane roundabout. And what that does is that helps a little bit with what you were talking about from a traffic flow standpoint. The other thing is that we looked at a design speed for this roundabout. The design speed on the roundabout is 23 miles an hour, which is, which is in line with national recommendations. One thing you may notice is the ISA leg on the approach. We actually show it meandering out and then coming back in and going through the roundabout, and that helps as well with the traffic flow like you were talking about. So that increases visibility as you're going through the roundabout, but then also, also has a smoother path as you go through the roundabout. So yes, that's something that we've taken into account, and that's shown with the design speed of 23 miles an hour and the flow going through the roundabout itself.
Would you happen to know, could you compare the size of this proposed roundabout to the one that's at 10th and Walker?
That's a good question. I don't know the exact exterior diameter. That one's different as well, though, just since it has four approaches entering the intersection.
Exactly, yeah.
That one was pretty constrained from a, from a right-of-way standpoint as well. This one, we have a little bit of flexibility to be able to make those approaches a little bit smoother entering the roundabout as well. I don't, I don't know the inscribed diameter for that, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other convention centers that have roundabouts this close?
This close? That's a good question. I can't think of one off the top of my head.
I'm just worried about a series of buses, and you're maintaining there's enough room in there to get a series of buses around this and through it?
Yeah, so you can see from the concept that we have a center island diameter of 50 feet. That red section outside of the center diameter, that's a truck apron. So what that allows is it allows vehicles to mount that section, so then they have an easier route getting around. Your typical vehicle will stay within the gray paving section, but the red apron is where your tractor trailers and your larger tour buses, they'll actually utilize that truck apron to be able to make the, make the roundabout safely and effectively.
And is this, the street exiting the circle to the east, is that 7th Street?
Correct, yes.
As you said, does that go all the way through to Shields?
7th does not connect to Shields.
So where is it going?
It would go to the Broadway, Broadway to the east, and then it'd be more of an internal roadway.
So how would you get to Shields from this circle?
Getting from Shields, so you could go, you could go through, so right-of-way would go up to 6th, and then you could get over to Shields. You can also go north on Robinson to the new Oklahoma City Boulevard eventually.
The main purpose of the roundabout is get people from the north who are going to the convention center, and they want to drop people off into the front of the convention center. So it's not really to get, the purpose isn't to get you to Shields, it's to get you to the front of the convention.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's say you drop somebody off. Are you heading north when you drop them off, or are you heading south when you drop them off?
They'll be heading north.
Okay. And so then you go to the Boulevard? If you want to go back to Shields, if you want to get back?
You go to the Boulevard, you know, the garage, you can, whatever, whatever you want to do with that.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Because the parking garage is basically on 4th Street, is that correct?
Yeah, Boulevard.
And the Boulevard, so okay. So you just make that circle, go north, and go into the parking garage. Great.
So as, you know, this is highly conceptual at this point in time, as far as the actual design. This was just part of our scope to address a drop-off condition as on Robinson, as the city manager said. This will go through a design process as it moves forward as well. So by all means, this is not a final design. This is just us implementing something that we feel is adequate because of the data. And Luke, what year did you guys project to? 2030, all the way out to 2030 for the traffic flow? So the pedestrian bridge, you know, in working with our, our subcommittee and our Citizens' Advisory Board, it was dedicated, it was decided that a bridge to the hotel is almost a necessity. So we were tasked with a concept design. Again, this is very high level, but I think we were all a little, we were just questioning how much something of this scope would cost. And so we were tasked from our MAPS committee to do three options to put a cost to what a bridge from our convention center would potentially mean for the, for the city. And so we have three options. One of them, we call it just circulation, and this is a bridge similar to the ones that you see around town today, the ones that are going from Devon Tower to the adjacent parking structures. This is a simple bridge, climate-controlled, 15 feet wide, that would plug into the hotel at a undetermined level at this point. But the cost of a simple structure like this connecting to our facility is approximately $1.5 million. The second option is what we're calling gathering. As the, as the hotel starts to develop, and the, obviously, the adjacent meeting room in the convention center, you would like to have a more meaningful relationship between the, the meeting space in the hotel and the meeting space in the convention center. So we came up with this option called gathering, where it allows a bit more of a footprint to allow some, some light gathering and reception space on this bridge. So again, a climate-controlled bridge that's a bit wider with some available program there for use, is approximately $2 million. And the third option, we call the program option. We see in convention centers around the country, you know, globally, that when you do have these connections, sometimes it is beneficial to add in some kind of program there, whether that is a coffee service, a small café, some kind of exterior space to allow, you know, views of the park and views down 4th Street. Again, just to provide a little bit of meat to that connection between the two spaces for all the patrons going back and forth between the two facilities. It really allows the buildings to start to function as one cohesive unit. So to do this and add the appropriate utilities, food service, you're looking at a cost of approximately $3 million. And so these were presented to our subcommittee. No decision was really made. I think this was just a more of an informational opportunity so that we all understand as we move forward with final plans, what we're dealing with as far as how we would implement a pedestrian bridge. We have designed our facility to accept this bridge, so now it'll be between us and further coordination with the hotel team on how we could make this bridge a reality. Right now, we've established a distance that can just get the bridge across 4th Street into the right-of-way of the adjacent hotel site. And so again, if we do decide to move forward with this, there will be some meaningful coordination between us and the hotel to make sure that not only the design, but the function of the bridge is beneficial for both facilities.
Adam, we met with a panel, the CVB brought in a panel of meeting planners, and they were just emphatic that there be a connection direct, and out of the weather connection so that people could walk back and forth. And they just said it was critical to make, they're making decisions about using the property. And also, thank you for taking this on, because we really do need it.
Yeah, you know, we, you know, from an urban planning perspective, you always kind of want to put people on the ground. However, there are examples where if you're at a convention and you do have to go back and forth from a meeting room in the hotel to a meeting room in the convention center, it is meaningful to have this connection between the two facilities if you talk about the traffic flow of a patron during an actual convention. So I completely understand where the meeting planners are coming from, of this being a benefit for the facility, for both facilities.
Adam, if it's not too late in the design stage, could you look at what they've done out at the airport, the rental car center? The art aspect of that was with respect to the entrance, that when you walk through, you've got a series of sounds and some lights. Yeah, and if you could somehow incorporate that kind of an idea in there, because one of the things that they did out there was provide historic, like radio clips of events that have occurred through Oklahoma, with this being a convention center. You could possibly copy a little bit of that idea, as long as that's okay to do.
Along with that, we are, all of our public art ideas right now are, we're on the ground level, so it's the right time to be having this conversation. We've been, we've had meaningful meetings with Robbie from the Art Department on how we can implement the public art in this project. And right now, I, we're kind of taking all ideas, and so it's definitely a meaningful, a meaningful comment right now as we move forward with this public art process.
Well, not to complicate things too much, if you went across to the parking garage, that breezeway, the artwork up there with the different sky clouds and stuff?
Yeah.
I would just take those ideas, since we've already paid for them, put them in here.
I hope the artist isn't listening.
Yeah, but it's our project now, right?
Yeah. So yeah, I mean, I agree, and I appreciate you all. We always do talk about public art, and it's great that we do keep having this discussion because we do know it's important for a facility this size, especially something that is marquee as this for Oklahoma City. And then another potential that-
It's apparently okay to plagiarize in accounting. Is that what I'm wondering?
Well, I should have asked you, James, that question as to what, since we bought this work of art in two places, could we somehow just share it with other parts of the city?
Only upon negotiation with the artist.
I see. Okay.
So I'm going to give an update on the schedule, the remaining schedule for the end of the year, and then any questions that you have for the whole project, we're willing to answer right now. And so we'll be submitting our final, our 95% final plans by Labor Day. That gives our MAPS team in the city to do a meaningful eight-week review. So it looks like we'll then submit our final plans sometime in October or November. Upon review, that gives our MAPS team some time to set up the documents to go out to bid. So we're looking at the documents bidding sometime in the first quarter of next year and hopefully a groundbreaking soon after that. So any questions from the council?
When do you think you'll be back in front of us with the next?
So we will, we will meet with our subcommittee in September. So I would assume that that will be a pretty robust meeting of our final plans. Again, nothing design-wise is changing, but there's still some stuff floating around as far as the bridge parking. So I would, I would assume sometime in the early fall, we will be back for another consultation.
David, can we pin you down for a groundbreaking on the convention center, or can you give us a good estimate?
I'm going to estimate about February of next year. That's, that's what we're shooting for. Once we get the bids, it might be first of March, but right there in February, March.
Exciting time. Thank you. Wrap up the convention center presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else on the consent docket? Anybody else have individual considerations?
I mean, I just wanted to mention item P. It's an annual approval of our continuum of care program, and these are the grants that we receive from the, from Housing and Urban Development that help particularly fund housing, helping get homeless folks off the street and work on the overall cost of homelessness. And these agreements are with, you know, our friends that I mention on a regular basis, but I always like to do so, the Homeless Alliance, Red Rock Behavioral Health Services, City Care, Hope Community Services, Community Enhancement Corp., OKC Metro Alliance, that runs our First Step Program, Heartline, and Be the Change, which is doing great work with street homeless. And this year, the dollar amount that we received from HUD is just in excess of $2 million. So Ed and I always talk about the paltry social services budget, and we wish more than anything, we could fix that, but we do on an annual basis receive substantial dollars from the federal government. We hope those will continue, but that's how many of these programs are funded. Thank you.
Yeah, Ed, just can I ask one more question on the convention center design?
Sure.
Can you, we talked about some kind of analysis on solar panel incorporation. Can you speak to that and also to the energy efficiency of the convention center itself?
So we did conduct the solar analysis, and the findings from our consultants and their coordination with the city was that at this point, it was not very cost prohibitive to put the solar into the building right now, that it would actually be a premium from the energy company to use the solar panels at this time. However, we did address the ability to potentially use wind energy as more of a viable solution to essentially generate energy for the center, but again, not in our scope of work now, but something that we could use in the future. As far as the current design for the energy, we're designing to the new 2015 Oklahoma City Building Code, which is much more strict than the old 2009 version. So what you're really seeing is, I know that we talk a lot about LEED silver, LEED gold. The new building codes are actually catching up to LEED as far as your base for design. And so we are taking every precaution to design the mechanical systems, all of the low emissive glass, all of the lighting in the building are LEDs. So we're designing a facility that is very strict and energy efficient. However, it was decided that we will not be pursuing a LEED rating. I know that that might seem like a red flag, however, we're confident that with just the basis of design through the code, that we are achieving an energy-efficient building, but it was decided to not actually go ahead and pay for that LEED status for this project.
One question. Good question. It reminded me of this. You talked previously about the building faces to the west, sun moves to the west, the heat turns. How have we dealt with that? How have we addressed that issue?
So I wish I had an old presentation up here. We've taken a number of robust systems, I guess you could say, to address that, most passive and some active. And so passive would be, you know, the high-efficiency, low-emissive glass. As I, as I stated in previous presentations, we're opening a facility in Anaheim right now that is almost this exact same condition, west-facing, and we're actually achieving a very high level of protection just with the glass in Anaheim. And so we'll be using a similar glass like that in this product, in this project. We also have passive levers on the west- We also have passive louvers on the west-facing facade, specifically on the meeting room space. So, a combination of the louvers and the low-emissive glass, and then on certain areas that we think are high-impact, we have a light frit on the glass, basically blocking a certain percentage of light. So, from an appearance perspective, the glass doesn't look any different, but it actually is blocking a substantial part of the light entering the facility. Also, as you've seen the architecture, we've specifically designed the building with deep architectural overhangs, so we're getting a lot of protection from the sun just from the architecture of the building. And if you look at our building and plan, we've rotated the building 25 degrees to the north. So, just that simple rotation and plan has allowed for a substantial amount of protection for majority of the year. But we always say this with our mechanical engineers, is that you're never really designing for Super Bowl Sunday, you're designing for the range of the entire year. So, if you were designing for the absolute hottest time of the year, the cost would be skyrocket. And so, what we've done is we've taken what we think is a recommended range for this region and designed to that. And on those certain days when you will have high exposure, that's when you would rely on the mechanical systems to kind of make up the difference from an active perspective. And again, from a functional standpoint, all of the meeting rooms that are west-facing, they have the ability to, to have blackout conditions. So, you have a series of blinds inside the room where they can allow ambient light or actually a blackout condition in the room. So, again, it's, it'll start to become an operational thing as we learn how to operate the building, but from a passive architectural perspective, we've pulled out all the tricks in the architectural handbag to, to address a west-facing condition.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you got some of the economic numbers from someone other than OG&E. But part of the economics, of course, is affected by the hostility towards solar at the legislature. If some of that changes, where they allow third parties to come in and lease and not be considered a utility, could your current design accommodate that in the future should legislation change in the future?
Yeah, so we've gone through the exercise of identifying what parts of the building can accept solar from a structural standpoint, certainly not exactly knowing what the systems will be in the future, but I know from an actual building standpoint, we can accommodate it if it does go down that route. It was just decided to not do it at this point in time.
But councilman, the driver on this, and even with the rate increase OG&E has had recently, the driver on why it's not cost-effective is because the overall low electric rates in Oklahoma.
That's part of it, but it's also that if a third party can come in and collect the tax credits, which we as a municipality cannot, that also shifts the economics.
That would be, that would be a factor, but you still, you still have the hurdle of the, of the overall low electric rate.
Right. That's currently not allowed in Oklahoma, and that's the part of the hostility of the legislature. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. I think we've addressed all of the individual items on the council agenda. I'll take the motion and the second to include all of the items on the consent docket with the exception of AM 2, which Councilwoman Sal Yar asked to be voted on separately. All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now, do we have a motion on item AM 2?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. And AM 2 passes unanimously. All right, we're on to the concurrence docket.
We've got items that take a single vote in first.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any items to be discussed on the concurrence docket? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. This moves us to item nine on the council agenda. These are items that require a separate vote. The first is a zoning case in Ward 4. The address is 6929 South Souna Road. It's currently I-2 moderate industrial, will be put into a new HUD if approved. Todd?
Has anyone signed up to speak against this?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
No.
No? Thanks. I've, where am I at? I've been out there, I've visited the site, I've looked at the plans, it was approved by the Planning Commission, so unless anyone has any questions for it, I'd move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone here hoping to speak on item 9A? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9B is also a zoning case. This one is in Ward 3. The address is 3714 Northwest 9th Street, and Larry, there is an amendment to the master design to consider as well.
Thank you. We deferred this last time. Bob, if you would, is the applicant present?
I didn't hear.
Yeah, if you'd come forward, it would be you and Bob Fisher. I had some concerns the last time. We talked on the phone since, since the last time. And there were two purposes for this, correct me if I'm wrong. One is to have a light industrial on one track and on the other to have some housing in the future, possibly on a second track. And on the housing one, we talked about limiting that to either a couple of duplexes or a triplex and not to have R4.
Right.
Is that-
Correct.
Does the material that we've got presented here, the updated material, conform with that, Bob?
Yes, when, if you approve the amendment, that's included, that would be included in the document.
Okay, so we need a motion on the amendment and then on the, on the item itself.
That's right.
Okay. Has anybody signed up on this?
No, sir.
Okay, then I would move the amendment.
All right, we're voting on item 9B1. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
And then, on the item itself, I move the item.
All right, now we're voting on item 9B2. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you all.
Item 9C is a request for a special permit to operate a public middle school and a high school in a C3 community commercial district, and it's in Ward 5. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, is anyone?
No.
Okay. May I ask for the representative to just make a brief presentation? I'm supportive of this idea, but it just hasn't received too much attention, so I thought it'd be a good time to just share some information about it. It's in the far southern district of the Oklahoma City Public Schools, just eight blocks south. The more public school boundary begins, so-
That's right. David Box, 522 Callcord Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Mr. Carl Edwards and several people from the Oklahoma City Public Schools. This will be an Oklahoma City Public School. It'll be Emerson South. What we have here is around 29,000 square feet, and this is the former location of Wright Business College. Because it's Zone C3, in order to operate a middle school and/or high school, a special permit is needed. And so, what we have filed is a special permit that has a pretty detailed program description. We anticipate approximately 200 students. We think that the site, having previously been an educational-type facility, lends itself well, and Planning Commission was unanimous in their recommendation, we'd ask for the same.
Great. Thank you, David. Any questions that David can respond to? Okay, well, thank you. Will I move for approval?
Second.
All right. We're voting on item 9C. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
And, Your Honor, they're anticipating beginning classes in August, so we need the emergency on this item as well. So, I move for approval.
Is there a second? Cast your votes on the emergency for item 9C. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9D is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 13730 North Douglas. It's currently double-A agricultural. It would become an RA2, single-family, two-acre rural residential district if passed. It was recommended for denial at the Planning Commission level. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see that the applicant is present. Can you briefly give a presentation on this site?
All right, again, David Box, 522 Callcord Drive. Tim Johnson, civil engineer for this project, also here with me. This is a site that is located in a rural area, and one of the issues that was faced at the Planning Commission was density. In your staff report, it makes a reference to perhaps Planning Commission believing that the density is out of scale. And so, what Mr. Johnson produced is exhibit to show you all of the other surrounding zoning cases. So, what we have is an application that would allow two-acre lots. There's a subsequent plat that will come forward. But what you see here is you've got the subject site, and all the other sites that are highlighted near yellow or red are developments that are either identical to ours or more dense than ours. So, we believe we have an application that is right in line with the surrounding area. And if you look at the details of this, you have less-than-acre lots, three-quarter of an acre, one acre, two acre, around two acre, two acre, one acre. So, our development's actually on the lower side of the density in that area. We think it's going to be a nice development that'll have wonderful two-acre lots, wonderful rural-type lifestyle. We, we do have an area in this part of the city that has wonderful trees. So, what Mr. Johnson plans to do on the plat is actually put a note on the plat requiring a certain level of tree preservation. We think that's going to be something that'll, that'll help this development, make it a unique development as part of the city.
All right. Mr. Box, I had an opportunity to drive this area over the weekend. Just northwest of this particular site, there is a pending zoning case in the city of Edmond where they're actually trying to do, I believe, a one-acre development. So, before I actually went out to this particular site, I was in favor of denying it, but after seeing that, again, just northwest of this particular site, that the city of Edmond is looking at rezoning a huge parcel of land that's, again, going to be one acre, and this site is going to be two acres, I think this follows in line. So, with that said, I move for approval of this item.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone else show up today hoping to speak to this item? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Time now for item 9E.
Mayor, item 9E is a resident, or is an ordinance that would, has to deal with termination of water service for non-payment of wastewater service charges. And Lee Booth is here from the Utilities Department this morning to give us a little more detail on this item.
Good morning. Lee Booth, Utility Customer Service. This ordinance being introduced to you today is about instances where Oklahoma City provides water service to a property and the property is served with wastewater service by another public entity. So, the state law changed in November of '16, and it requires Oklahoma City to provide this service to another public entity when requested. So, the ordinance before you establishes a procedure whereby, in this instance, the city of War Acres, who's approached us, establishes a procedure whereby we provide notification to customers and an opportunity for a public hearing for them prior to their service being disconnected. So, for perspective, there, we provide water service to about 213,000 customers in Oklahoma City. Of those, roughly 10,000 receive their water from us and their wastewater service either from another provider or have a private service. And we have 3,400 customers which we share with War Acres. So, we're talking about a relatively small portion of our customer base. The cost of this program is borne by the users, so customers who we post public notice on will pay for that public notice. Customers whom we disconnect will pay for the reconnection of their service, and the administrative charge associated will be handled through our cost-of-service fees that we charge to outside-city retail customers.
Lee, this has really started by the city of War Acres.
Yes, sir.
Who we provide all the water for, and they provide the wastewater services for. And so, when they have people that don't pay their wastewater service, they had no recourse.
Yes, sir.
And so, they went to the state legislature, got legislation change, and what we are doing is change, is a procedural change to go in accordance with the state law that was recently passed.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions on item 9E? All right, well, the item is being introduced today, and it will be a public hearing on August 1st. We would expect a final hearing on August 15th. So, just a motion today to accept the item as introduced.
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9F, this begins a series of items from the Traffic Commission. Most are in Ward 6, the last couple are in Ward 7. Maggie, okay with these first four?
Yes, I am, Mayor. These are to deal with parking issues surrounding the new police department headquarters at 700 Callcord, so I would ask to move approval on F1.
All right, there's a motion on F1. Is there a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. A motion on F2?
F2, make, move approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And F3?
Move approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
You know, Paul, it's-
Item F4?
Move approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9F5 is in Ward 7. John?
Move approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 9F6?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? Yes, sir, come on forward.
I own the property at 1900 Northeast 18th Street.
All right.
And I had gotten a notice to come in today, and what I want to do is, right now, I'm in bankruptcy, looking at, looking at Jacob, and I talked to my lawyer on last week, but right now, him, my lawyer, and the lawyer with the Penny Mac Market Company, I don't know what got the operation on hold, but right now, they're trying to see, they said this is one of the first time that they had a property that was in bankruptcy get burned. So, they're trying to, my lawyer, Penny Mac Law, lawyer, they're trying to work it out where, I guess, trying to see where this thing will come out.
How long have you owned the property?
Since 2005, I think, when I bought it.
All right. And did the fire occur before you bought it or afterwards?
Afterwards. In fact, the fire happened March of this year.
Okay. Do you have any insurance that would protect you from the, on the fire?
The insurance, I worked with the insurance and the market company up until May. The insurance finally released the check, sent it to the market company. The market company right now have the check in a, what they call a escrow account, and I don't know exactly why it's on hold, but I've been trying to get something done with the insurance, the market company, to release the check. Either we need to try to rebuild, or we need to take and pay the market company off and try to do something with the rest of the money. Right now, I'm just in limbo. I don't know.
Yeah. Are you hoping to bring the property back and make it a viable, rentable property or livable property?
Well, I want to, originally, when I bought the place, I wanted to fix it up, and I have been working on it, to move there myself, me and my wife. I would like to live on that property myself. I do have other rental property, but I just kind of fell in love with that one.
Yeah, well, I mean, obviously, we're having to look after your neighbors, and the property can't stay in the condition it is now. What are you, what are you suggesting we do?
Well, right now, I just need a little bit more time because the lawyers, they're the one that got me on hold, and I know that the property can't stay in the, in the condition that it's in, but until I get a release of money or relief from the market company, I'm, I'm just at a standstill.
All right. John, why don't we get some advice from Charles and see where we are on this?
We'll try to work with him, you know, on this, of course. What I would, just from experience, that usually that notice of dilapidated usually motivates the mortgage holder and the insurance company to work with the, with the owners quite a bit.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, we're going to leave this item on the agenda, but if you will stay in contact with Charles, and Charles will work with you so we can get this resolved.
Sure.
And the mortgage holder has been notified, right?
Yes.
All right. So, make sure you have Charles's business card before you leave here today, and the two of you can continue to work together. And we wish you good luck in getting that property up and hope someday you can move over there.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks for coming down this morning.
Uh-huh.
All right, any other?
Yes, I'd like to speak on it.
You want to come up on item 9G? All right, Michael, we'll need your name and address.
Yes, I see Washington 2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Now, I see a, I see these various properties and things that talk about being destroyed and all this here, but I don't find one time, or in one instance, are we talking about- and all this here, but I don't find one time, only one instance, are we talking about closing down those dilapidated buildings that's abandoned by the Oklahoma School District. That's right. We got several schools on the northeast side, been up there for tremendously, a number amount of years, and yet you wanna take someone else's personal property because they don't have the money to upgrade it?
Yeah.
If we're gonna discriminate, well, that goes with this, it goes with the houses, it goes with the houses.
It doesn't go with the houses.
Okay, well, let me tell you about this man. And first of all, again, back to this man here.
Okay.
This address here, this property, young man, sir, you need to talk to me before you leave, because if they decide to try and destroy your property, based upon your right to due process, you have a right to file a civil litigation, and you can file, I'm talking in this man's behalf now, you can file, also, let me talk to him, tell you.
Did he leave?
Oh, he's gone. I feel like I'm talking to myself almost. Now, see, there y'all go. But, believe it or not, y'all have no authority to address this man in this such a manner. Now, you can take him to court, but you don't have a right to, in and of itself, because that's what you call due process of law. That man has a personal stake in his real properties, and that would be, in a sense, your actions would be basically a communist-type role. Okay, your property is not up to standard, so I'm gonna destroy it. That's not how it works. That's why you have a judicial system. Then you have an appellate system. Then you have the Supreme Court of Oklahoma and the United States Constitution, which is its constitution and laws of the land. Now, not only is this man's property being infringed on, and you're putting him through the wringer, forcing him to make a stand or take an action, I don't believe that that's the right step to take. I believe that this man should be set down, and I like what this gentleman here spoke about, I like that, by the way. I don't know your name, I've seen you plenty of times. I like, and matter of fact, councilman, I wanna talk to you a little bit about something a little later on. But, let me say a closing. If there is any instance on the northeast side of Oklahoma City where that's improper conduct, I personally will be taking you people to court.
All right, thanks, Michael.
Have a good day.
All right. Need a motion on item 9G?
Move items.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H?
Move items.
Okay, with motion and a second. Michael, which item did you wanna speak on?
I'll just stand there while I hold you up.
No, Michael, you have to speak to a specific item on the list.
Okay, so, let me take 3 Southeast 27th Street.
All right.
Can I see a picture of it? Oh, my goodness, what in the world is that? Yes, you, yes, you, yeah, turn it down. But, I mean, I don't, I don't need to talk on that, let me just go.
Michael, this isn't appropriate for you just to go through the list and give your personal opinion.
But you have them out there, I mean, I'm a man that wants to speak on this issue.
No, you're making a mockery of the whole thing.
No, I'm not making a mockery. I'm right under the constitutional laws of the state of Oklahoma, under the Open Records and Open Meetings Act, to speak on an issue that you have an agenda on item.
Which item would you like to speak on?
I have to see him, I can't see him.
Well, there's a list there in front of you.
Now, I like to go to 112, 1112 North Douglas Avenue.
All right.
On a, on a abandoned.
Abandoned.
Oh, abandoned, excuse me, abandoned. Okay, well, that's nothing to talk about, I mean.
Michael, we talked about a way that you could review these ahead of the meeting.
No, 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 we're gonna talk about what you suggest is no good, because I'm following the laws and dictates of Oklahoma Constitution. If you got someone, item up before me to be talked upon, I don't have to say, well, look, I'm gonna write it down first. That's not how it works. I wanna talk on an issue unless you change the rules and regulations, I would like to talk on the issue, not because you wanna go home.
Michael, which issue would you like to speak about next?
Yeah, now, let's go back, I can't see it. Okay, now, I'm not gonna hold everybody up because of that, but let me tell you, let's go to 1133 Northwest 26th Street. But I'm gonna do this, like I say, for the sake of conformity here, one time. But they, they wanna turn this place down? Oh.
All right, do we have a motion on item 9H?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes on 9H. Passed unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9I?
Move items.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9J is a public hearing regarding the removal of property from the abandoned buildings list. Is there a motion on item 9J?
Yes.
Anyone show up to speak on any of these items? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Mayor, do you wanna point out that you, item C101, he shared it was the old spaghetti warehouse building?
All right, item 9K begins a couple of items that deal with the city's efforts with Omni Hotels to build a convention center hotel. I'm gonna introduce Kathy O'Connor and allow Jim to set the issue up for us.
All right, Kathy.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting me here to speak this morning about our progress on the convention center hotel. We have two items before you this morning. One is a redevelopment agreement with Omni Hotels, and the other is a funding plan that sets out a process in order to fund the public participation that's required for the hotel project. Just to kinda overview what we're gonna do this morning, the first thing we're gonna do is, I'm gonna review the project and talk a little bit about how we've gotten to the place that we are today. Next, we have Tom Hizinski with HVS, who is here to make a presentation about an economic impact study that we recently completed that examines the economic impact of the convention center project with and without the hotel development. Then, we're going to go through the terms of the redevelopment agreement, and finally, go through the funding plan and have a summary of comments and recommendations to go forward. To start out, I think we need to remember that the purpose of the MAPS III projects were, one of the main goals of the MAPS III projects was to spur private investment in and around the investments that the city is going to make. And I know that that's a big component of what we plan to do with the new park project along the streetcar route, and the same is true for the convention center. This project is designed to create new economic impacts and benefits to Oklahoma City by attracting additional convention, visitor, trade show, public exhibition, and other types of events that require a large quantity of hotel rooms in order to book those types of events. It will generate increased tourism to Oklahoma City, which is one of the fastest-growing components of our local economy. It will provide job creation and increased employment opportunities, both as the hotel is constructed and as the hotel continues operations. And it'll enhance and foster greater utilization and more efficient utilization of the new convention center, making it much more economically feasible and sound as it goes forward with its operations. Just wanted to go through a little bit of the process to date. We've been, we've been working on this project for several years now. If you remember, in 2015, we, the city council authorized the launch of the procurement process to select a hotel developer. We qualified four firms, we issued an RFP, and we qualified four firms based on their past experience, the team they assembled, their financial capability, and their general approach to the project. In January of 2016, we began to receive input from meeting planners about the project and what their desires and goals were. In May of 2016, we shortlisted the developers. We requested additional information from the shortlisted developers and received two responses back. One from Mortensen and Marcus, who teamed together, and a second proposal from Omni. In September of 2016, the selection committee met and determined that Omni was the best choice for the city to move forward with in negotiations. Late in September of 2016, the city council authorized myself and the city manager to negotiate with Omni, and the agreement that we have today before you is the result of those negotiations. One of the reasons, just to go through some of the reasons that Omni was selected, first of all, they were selected by unanimous vote of the selection committee. One of the major factors is that they are bringing a 150, over $150 million developer contribution to the project. They will be a private partner with substantial balance sheet that eliminates financing contingencies, which is important as we structure these deals. There's a certainty of ownership and a long-term commitment to their projects. They have significant experience in operating convention center hotels and Four Diamond level hotels. And they're an entrepreneurial organization that has very distinctive concepts that reflect the local communities that they, that they have projects in, and that was important to the team. This is an early concept. Everybody thinks that this isn't the design of the hotel, this is a conceptual design, and the final design will vary from this somewhat, but this is a design that was come up with to show how the, how the project would fit on the, on the property that's been identified as the site for the hotel. And just to kind of summarize the, what we had in the proposal from Omni, they will be the brand, they will be the operator, they will be the owner. At the time the proposals were submitted, their contractor was Brassfield and Gori, I think they are reviewing other options as far as contractors, as well as other options as far as who the architect will be. The number of rooms is 600 rooms. They will have about 50,000 square feet of ballroom and meeting room space, which will be an important complement to the convention center and will help us attract more events to the city and even be able to host more than one event at a time. And they will have up to six restaurant and food and beverage outlets within the, within the hotel center, and the total square feet of the center is about 570,000 square feet. So with that, I'd like to introduce Tom Hizinski with HVS. HVS does consulting in the convention sports, leisure, visitor arena. Again, they were asked by us to complete an economic impact study. Some of the work that they do will be a part of the incentives as we move forward with this project if the council determines to do that. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Hizinski.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. Just a little bit of background on HVS, we are largest hospitality consulting firm in the U.S. devoted to, exclusively to hospitality. We, I lead the division called Convention Sports and Entertainment, and our area specialties is the market analysis, impact analysis of public assembly facilities, including convention centers. So, we've done this kind of work all over the country, and we're very pleased to be able to bring our experience to Oklahoma City, which is engaged in what I view as a really exciting project. So, to, to do an economic impact study, we first had to do a market analysis of both the convention industry and the hotel industry. And so, that started with a review of what historically you've been doing in the industry. And the first graph you see here is just a picture of what kind of events and attendance you've been attracting over the past few years. Somewhere, an average of about 87 events over the past four years, with attendance ranging around 300,000 per year. And on the next slide, we looked at what kind of business you're losing today. So, the convention, the Visit KC is actively trying to market the existing facility, meeting a lot of resistance. So, we looked at that data, and we looked at events that could be located in the convention center, and how many are being lost on average annually. And due to lack of space or dates in the convention center, about 23 events are lost. And due to a lack of inadequate hotel room block, about 16 events are lost on average per year, with a total of about 112,000 room nights. So, if you were to recover one in four of these events, you might get 10 additional events. The new convention center would have more capacity, particularly capacity to do simultaneous events, and it would free up a lot of space. And of course, the addition of the hotel would address the hotel room block need. But this doesn't represent, going into the next slide, this doesn't represent the whole universe of potential events. So, we looked at a database called a Mint Database. It's provided by the Destination Marketing Association International. And we, we looked at, in that event database, there's about 1,200 events that rotate around the country, okay, of various sizes. And that database contains information about where they, where they occurred, what the origin of the event is, and how many attendees they have, and how many room nights they generate. So, we, we analyzed that database, but we looked, you know, as events rotate around the country, they go to different regions. So, we only looked at those that what we called regional events occurred in the Midwest, about 12 states in the Midwest running down the central United States. We further sorted that database for events with about 5,000 or fewer attendees, this would be the kind of capacity you would have with the, with the new convention center. And then, we also looked at what ones were nationally rotating. We tried to eliminate, let's say, Texas events that are originated in Texas, that occur in Texas, that are not likely to occur in Oklahoma, let's say. So, that got us down to about 269 events, which, with average room nights of about 3,000 room nights a year. So, this is just a, a good indicator of the size of the market that's available for you, and so, that's the kind of market you'd wanna be penetrating in terms of attracting convention events. So, if you were to get one in 10 of those events, you could get 26 events, okay? So, that's just a, a kind of a rough indicator of the size of the market. So, going on, we then did an analysis of how comparable venues are doing. So, we selected some that where we could get data on their operating performance. And this is, this slide indicates the size of the function space in these facilities. The blue bar represents exhibit space, the red bar represents ballroom space, and the green bar represents meeting space. So, we looked at Denver Convention Center, or the convention center in Denver, which is the Colorado Convention Center, Columbus in Pittsburgh, Oklahoma City, the new proposed is in the darker shade, and the Albuquerque Convention Center in Grand Rapids, Michigan, DeVos Place. So, you can see, we've selected cities where you can fit in the middle of those, some are larger, some are smaller. And so, we wanted to look at the characteristics of those destinations to see how you should be performing. So, putting it in context, so, we did a market analysis of all of these. So, if you go on to the next slide, we, one of the key criteria for event planners in selecting a destination is availability of hotel rooms. And adjacent rooms, the rooms connected in the headquarters hotel, like the Omni, which would bring 600 rooms to Oklahoma City, you're kind of in the middle of the pack there. Similar convention centers have around 600 rooms. Denver, being a much larger market, has more. Albuquerque, a market that's not performing well, only has 295. If you look at proximate hotel rooms, hotel rooms that are within one mile and can serve the convention center, you're gonna have about, with new supply entering the market, about 3,200 rooms. So, you're, you're in a pretty good position with respect to proximate hotel rooms. We looked at a number of other criteria that are shown on the next couple of slides that indicate the strength of the destination. Now, when conventions, when convention event planners select a, a city to come to, they're looking not just at a building, they're looking at a destination and what it has to offer. They want, they want strong attendance, they want, they want a sense of place and destination. So, resident population is an indicator of the kind of support. Now, this is a, all of these data I'm showing you is based on a source called ESRI, and it's data on what's available within a 15-minute walking distance. So, it is the convention destination. So, Oklahoma City is currently pretty weak with respect to residential population, and that's important because residential population supports the kind of amenities that convention attendees like. You, although, another criteria you measure up very well, you have strong median household income within that range, and you have a stronger-than-most amount of business sales, and going on to the next slide, your retail sales is relatively low, there aren't a lot of retail generators, but you have a lot of arts and entertainment and recreation, sales within, within that 15-minute walking distance, and you're, but you're second last with respect to restaurant and bars. So, we also looked at this in a more graphic way, using the same data source, if you go on to the next slide. This, this, I'll show you a series of slides of these various cities, so it gives you a picture of how you stand with respect to these other cities. So, what you see in the red dots here are the arts and entertainment venues, and the green dots are restaurants and nightlife, so include bars and so on, and the blue are retail outlets. So, you could see the location of the new convention center and where it is located with respect to these. to these. It's south of most of these, most of these destination amenities. Going to the next slide, we see Denver, and you see, this is a highly successful convention destination. You see the intensity of arts, restaurant, and retail that it has. Go on to the next one, Pittsburgh has a similar kind of density, just adjacent to its convention center, not across the river, but below the river. Go on to the next one, Columbus, Ohio, has more scattered amenities, and you see that string of them that's called the Short North, north of the convention center. It has a decent set within walking distance, and they've done a lot to improve connectivity to those retail amenities that are just north of the convention center. Going on to the next one, Grand Rapids, Michigan, so getting to look a little bit more like Oklahoma City with a significant number of retail, arts and entertainment, and restaurant outlets. And going finally onto Albuquerque, you see it's one of the weaker destinations. One of their disadvantages is that they have, a lot of their amenities are in the old town, which are far away from their convention center, up in the upper left-hand corner of this. So the next slide, you see, compare it side by side, you can see, kind of get a visual picture of how Oklahoma City stacks up today with respect to these other destinations. So what needs to be done to improve destination appeal in Oklahoma City, go on to the next slide, you're actually doing those things. You're connecting to amenities, you're doing exactly what needs to be done to make this a better destination. It's really an impressive plan. You're not only connecting to the existing amenities, you're creating new amenities in the parks and in the hotel and in the convention center itself. So these dots are going to be, start appearing more as you move down to the river as this development occurs. So it strikes me as brilliantly exactly the right move, exactly the right location for this to improve your overall destination appeal. So we took all that into account and said, okay, so how should this new convention center perform? And we, with the help of SMG, we were able to get data on the events in these other cities. And we break them down in this chart by type of event. Conventions and trade shows, which are really the important, the most important line there because they're the ones that generate a lot of economic impact and generate room nights. Consumer shows are mostly locally-based events, have high attendance, but don't draw as much out-of-town traffic. Similarly, with banquets. And meetings have a lot of out-of-town attraction too, but they're much smaller. So the most important line in that chart is the top one. So in the green bar, you see our projections of how we think Oklahoma City's going to do. So you can see, because it doesn't compare favorably right now in all these categories, we've been conservative about how it would perform. We don't have it as being a top performance, we have it on par with Pittsburgh. If you, DeVos Place in Grand Rapids has a lot of those sports and entertainment events. We don't expect those here, but if you take those out, you're very much on par with DeVos. And so you can see in those comparisons, that's where you compare as a market, so this is how we think you should perform. So that gets you to about around 170 events a year with 40 conventions and trade shows. Flipping on to the next slide, this is our estimate of attendance, okay? So we looked historically at what average-sized events you're getting. We think the new events you're going to get, because a lot of them are going to be simultaneous, actually might be smaller. And we saw in that Mint database that they were a little smaller. So we actually reduced, as you get more events, the average size we think is going to shrink a little bit, but still you're going to generate significantly more attendance than a couple of the other venues, but not nearly what Denver is doing or what Columbus is doing. Columbus has the advantage of having the fourth-largest state association market in the U.S. You don't have that strong state association market. So that's why we are not putting you at a level that Columbus Convention Center is at. But you're very similar to Grand Rapids and very similar to Pittsburgh. Much better than Albuquerque. Albuquerque is not a well-performing destination because it lacks hotel proximity and it lacks a lot of amenities. So on to the next slide, then, we were asked the question, well, how is it going to perform with and without the hotel? So in order to estimate the impact of the hotel, we had to create two scenarios, one development of the convention center with it and one without. We know from experience and having surveyed event planners for many, many years, and this is what your advisory groups told you, that a headquarters hotel is crucially important. So these are surveys we've done in a number of different cities, but the answers always come back the same. So we asked them, do you need a proximate hotel, one that's just nearby, not necessarily attached? And 95% of event planners say, these are convention event planners, so they exclude people that do sports or do consumer shows, these are just convention event planners. 95% of them either say it's preferred, 82% say it's required. So it's extremely important. We asked them, do you need a headquarters hotel? And 86% say it's preferred or required, so 58% require it. So you can see it's really important. So we factored this in, going on to the next slide, into our projections of how the convention center would perform with and without the headquarters hotel. So we have it at, you know, the overall event size isn't, number of events isn't hugely different, we have 146 without the hotel, 171 with, but the big difference is in the number of conventions that you would be attracting. New conventions that you'd be attracting would be 28 new conventions with a hotel, only 18 without. So admittedly, there's some judgment involved in this, but it's informed by all that data that we presented to you and all the analysis we've done on loss business and comps and so forth. So then what about attendance and room nights that would be generated? So with, without the hotel, those 146 events would generate about 484,000 attendees, but only 135,000 approximately room nights. With a new hotel, that, that number increases about 100,000 more room nights per year with a new hotel is what we're forecasting. So you can see that, because it's making a big difference for convention events, it's making a big difference for the room night impact. And those are the, those are the events that really generate economic impact. So with those as our, our demand forecast, going on to the next slide, we also analyzed, well, how is this hotel going to perform in the market? What kind of demand is it going to bring in? So we analyzed a competitive set of downtown hotels, and here's a list of them, about 200, 2,300 rooms that are currently in the market today. And these would be, to some extent, not entirely, but to some extent, each one of these might compete with the new Omni Hotel. Going on to the next slide, this is how supply and demand has been growing since 2009 in Oklahoma City. Very impressive growth in both supply and demand. And you can see, from 2009 through 2013, the blue bar represents available room nights in the market. So that's the number of rooms times the number of days in the year, available room nights. And you see it's, it's flat to 2013, then in 14 we start having, in 15, 16, we have significant addition in new supply. So what happens along with that? Demand is growing nicely, mildly, we got a kink in 2013 because of economic conditions and, you know, the falling gas prices affects hotel demand, recovery in 14, but then new supply comes in and you see another jump in the number of occupied room nights, shown in those yellow bars. So you've got new supply adding and new demand is going on with it. Going on to the next slide, this is a percent change annually in the number of available and occupied room nights. So what this is showing us is that we had, we had demand growth without new supply. When new supply came in in 2014, it sucked in a lot of new demand into the downtown market. Now, some of this was coming from outside Oklahoma City, some of it was coming from suburban hotels that people were staying there, but they really wanted to be downtown and seeing there's a lot of pent-up demand in the market for downtown hotels. Now, the question going forward is, is this pattern going to continue? We have a lot of new supply going on in the next slide. This is, this is the history of occupancy, average daily room rate, that's what ADR is, average daily room rate, and revenue per available room. These are three metrics that measure the performance of hotel markets. So you can see those, that's the supply and demand results in, you know, when the demand started coming in, in the blue line, you see occupancy started to fall in 13 and 14 because there was more new supply added than there was demand. But rates continue to grow, average daily room rate, that orange line on the top continued to grow, and it's kind of now leveling out. So the dotted red line is revenue per available room, and that's a combined measure of occupancy and average daily room rate. And you can see that's kind of leveled out as well. So, and that's the impact of this new supply coming into the market. So the question going forward is, how is new supply going to continue to affect this market? How well are you going to be able to absorb this? There's a lot of new supply coming into downtown. The headquarters hotel, 600 rooms, is one small piece of that. There's, by 2020, if you look at everything that's on the books today, and this is a list of them, you'll go from about 2,300 rooms to about 4,300 rooms. This is a really substantial increase in the supply in the market. So we know from past experience that some of this new supply is going to induce some new demand into the market. But we also, you know, think it's going to actually have placed further downward pressure on occupancy rates. We also, when we analyze this, you know, we weight this. So, you know, a staybridge suites in Bricktown is not 100% competitive with the new Omni Hotel, it's only partially competitive. So we weight the competitiveness of each one of these properties. So on a weighted basis, you got about 2,100 rooms in the market, and that's growing to about, by 1,600 rooms to about 3,400. So we're seeing on a weighted basis about a 78% increase in supply. So it's not quite as dramatic as a total increase because a lot of these, this new supply isn't going to be directly competitive. So going on to the next slide, then, this is what our projected available and occupied room nights are in the market in 2016 and going forward. So we see really steady growth in supply, pretty strong growth in demand, some because it's being induced, some because the convention center is bringing in new, new demand. That's all factored into this estimate of how the occupied room nights are going to go. So if you look at the next slide, this is the resulting, what we are projecting is a resulting performance of the market. We see occupancy falling every year through 2020, but then beginning to recover. You know, it'll get to the point where the market will be built up and there won't be any incentive to invest in new hotels. At that point, occupancy rates are going to start to recover as demand begins to catch up with the supply. It's just kind of a very typical cycle, although this is a pretty big chunk of new supply coming into a particular market. I think a lot of it reflects the fact that you've been underhotelled for a long time. But the big question is, you know, what is that, what is the impact of that new supply? So this is our best estimate of what's going to happen. So the resulting analysis, we look at how the Omni would penetrate that market, we think it would open with an occupancy around 57%. By 2024, that occupancy would grow to 29%, I mean, 69%. And the average daily room rate, we have it positioned as a strong leader in the market, growing from $167 to about $187 in 2024. So that's our take on how, we had to do this analysis of the hotel market, how the Omni is going to perform, because the Omni itself is going to induce some new demand into the market. It's going to bring meetings that are contained just into the hotel that aren't occurring in Oklahoma City today. So we're using that, going on to the next slide, we use information about what new demand the Omni is bringing and new demand the convention center is bringing to analyze economic impact. And this is a depiction of our methodology for economic impact. We are very intent on focusing on what the net new impact is. This is really important because a lot of impact studies are flawed because they count just the gross, all the gross spending associated with the project. It's only really a new impact if it's importing new income into your economy, right? So that's what we're really trying to get at. How much new income are you going to have in the Oklahoma City economy? So we start at the top line with looking at our demand. We look at the visitors with the new convention center, and we take out what you're currently doing today. It's termed expansion here, but it's really new build versus the existing building today. So that gives us our net new visitors. So they're the ones that are generating the impact, and the meetings and the spending associated with those events are generating the impact. And then we have data on how much those visitors spend, how much the event planner spend, how much exhibitors spend, and we multiply that by the new visitation. That gives us an estimate of the new, only the new direct spending that's in the economy. So then you've got this new spending in the economy, how's it going to affect your economy? So that's, we run through a model of your local area economy that shows all the inputs and outputs of your economy, and we estimate net direct spending. So let's say someone comes in, visitor comes in and buys a t-shirt, right? The gross spending is what they pay for that t-shirt, the net direct is what the retail margins are, what the retailer gets that stays in Oklahoma City, that's the net direct impact. So we don't take the total direct spending, we cut it down to make sure that we understand what direct spending is actually landing in the economy. And then we look at indirect spending. So let's say someone goes to a restaurant, the restaurant needs to buy food and supplies. To the extent that they buy that locally within the economy, that's called an indirect spending, it's a new business spending. And then the waiter or waitress serving that meal may have more income because of tips and wages. To the extent that that person spends that money into the economy, in the economy, it's called an induced impact. So we add those, and we actually have looked at the economy by the zip codes within the city of Oklahoma City, and we modeled that economy. And we add those things up, and that gives us our total impact, our dollar impact on the economy. And also generates an estimate of the number of jobs that are associated with that spending. So we get this impact by various job sector, whether it's in hospitality or in transportation, whatever sector, we know how many jobs it takes to support that kind of spending from this model, and so we estimate job impacts as well. And then as a final step, we say, well, how's all that new money in the economy, how is it taxed? How does it affect your, what is the fiscal impact on the city itself? So that's a process we go through to do that methodology, it's a tried and true methodology that really tries to get a true impacts, not gross, but net and net new, real impacts on your local economy. So going on to the next slide, this is the result of the spending that we estimate. So, and this, again, this is net new spending, and it's stated in $2,017, it would recur annually, right? So without the hotel, we are estimating it's about $62 million annually, with the hotel, nearly $140 million, a $75 million difference. So this new hotel has a really significant net new impact on spending. Flipping to the next slide, we show what the jobs impacts are. So again, these aren't direct jobs, these are the jobs that are supported by all that spending, and we're estimating about 390 without the hotel and 910 with the hotel, a 510, a 520 difference. These are, and these are full-time equivalents. Now, you may have heard some other job estimates. We look at, sometimes it's total jobs, which may be double this amount, right? But we're looking, because a lot of jobs in the hospitality industry are part-time, right? So this is, we take this and we convert those jobs into what we consider a full-time equivalent job. So these would be full-time, good-paying jobs in aggregate. And then we asked, okay, the city has a sales tax and lodging tax, and we apply that to the new spending, and that would generate about 1.3 million a year in new fiscal impacts in $2,017, and with the hotel about 3.2 million. So with and out the hotel, you've got about a $1.9 million difference in the total fiscal impacts. So that's a pretty high-level summary. We, you know, we've got We, you know, we've got a lot of, I hope you can see, we're really data-oriented, and we have, you know, rationale for all the, the numbers that we've projected here. But this is our best estimate of the kind of impact that this development will have on your community.
Thanks, Tom. And you have others that want to present, and then we'll allow the council to ask questions of anyone who's had a chance to present.
Right. I, I have a little bit more to go through, and then Craig, Mr. Rowling will get up and say a few things, and then Craig Freeman will talk about the funding plan.
Okay.
So what we want to do is kind of walk through the terms of the redevelopment agreement with you. We included the redevelopment agreement in your council packets, as well as a summary that's a little bit easier to, to wade through than going through the lengthy legal document. But just to kind of go through this relatively quickly, but still spend a little bit of time on the key points. The parties to the agreement are Omni, OKC LLC, as well as the city, the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority, and the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust. There will be several related agreements that will come forward that include the economic development agreement that spells out how the public participation will be provided to the project. The parking easement, which we'll talk a little bit more about parking in a minute, but it will spell out how Omni is to receive access to 450 spaces in a new parking garage and to pay for those, as well as a room block agreement that will be between Omni, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and SMG about how the room block will be managed. That's a, that's an integral part of this agreement. The term of the agreement will begin, will be for 45 years after the issuance of the hotel's certificate of occupancy. There will be a closing that will take place in approximately 12 months related to the purchase of the land, and, and closing will take place after certain conditions precedent are met by both the city and Omni. One of the important aspects of this agreement for Omni was what we have defined as the city projects. And the city projects are the convention center, the park, and the street car, as well as the completion of a parking garage. Those city projects are very important to Omni, that they be funded and completed within the scope, according to the scopes that the council has already approved. So the city must provide evidence that the city projects are moving forward, that we own the land for the parking garage, and that they are fully funded. The city will provide periodic updates on the schedules associated with the city projects, and we will take the steps necessary to implement the funding plan. The conditions precedent that Omni has to satisfy before closing include preparing a preliminary development schedule, obtaining all necessary development approvals, including permits, design review, everything related to construction. They have to submit and prepare at their expense conceptual plans and hotel plans. Those are subject to approval by the city. There will be a preliminary project budget that they must provide and evidence of project Omni does have the right to postpone closing if they see that the city projects are not moving forward according to schedule, or that they are no longer funded, or that they materially deviate from the conceptual plans. In all three cases, Omni has to believe that such occurrence will materially and adversely impact the hotel. So Omni's obligations regarding construction are that they, one of the major premises is that the completion of the convention center hotel will coincide with the completion of the convention center and the parking garage. The preliminary project but, schedule calls for construction to begin within six months after closing, and construction will last for 30 months. We believe that construction will actually last about 24 months, but there is some, some, wiggle room built into the schedule for, for contingencies. Omni may delay construction if the development of the convention center or the garage fall behind schedule. They're not obligated to open the hotel until the convention center and the garage are complete. However, they may elect to operate, I mean to open if temporary parking is available for them, and, and we have to make that temporary parking available for up to six months. At closing until the hotel opens, Omni Hotels Corporate will provide a completion and performance guarantee to the city to, to ensure the timely completion of the hotel, and all of Omni's, costs associated with the hotel will be guaranteed. The city's obligations as to the city projects, again, we have to ensure that the convention center is continually operated as the city's primary convention center, and that it's maintained to the same standard that it was built to. The hotel has to be designated as the city's convention center hotel. Once construction is underway, the convention center must stay substantially in compliance with schedule. The city must, again, this is more back to the city projects, we have to provide evidence that the funds for the city projects are held in a segregated MAPS III project account, which we can already do, and the city projects conceptual plans have not been deviated from materially. So the, in the redevelopment agreement, Omni's obligations for hotel operations is that they must keep the hotel open continually. They must meet the minimum operating standards for a AAA four diamond hotel and their own brand standards. They must materially comply with the room block agreement. They have to reconstruct the hotel if it is damaged or destroyed, and they have to use the property only as a hotel as required by the redevelopment agreement for 45 years, or if the new convention center is no longer used as the city's main convention center at some point in the future. Parking for the hotel, the city is responsible for causing the construction of a parking garage. The city and Omni will enter into a parking easement that will allow Omni to use 450 spaces in this new garage. Omni will pay market rates for those spaces. Omni will not, and again, Omni will not be obligated to open until the garage is operational. But again, they can agree to use substitute parking arrangements or temporary parking. The city and Omni have reciprocal rights of access to each other's spaces. So for example, if the hotel doesn't need all 450 of their spaces, but the city or CVB needs those space, some of those spaces for an event, we have access to each other's spaces if we need them. And the city will be obligated to cause the reconstruction of the garage if it's destroyed. There are default and termination provisions in the agreement. Prior to closing, the, the parties have the right to terminate the agreement if the conditions precedent are not met. Any condition precedent within the city's control, if, if any of the conditions precedent within the city's control are not met, the city is obligated to pay Omni up to $1,250,000 for their design expenses, their out-of-pocket expenses related to design and development of the hotel. If they terminate prior, if Omni decides to terminate prior to closing because they believe the project is no longer economically feasible, they are not entitled to receive the $1,250,000. After closing, if Omni defaults on its performance or abandons the project, the city will notify Omni, they will have the opportunity to cure that default, and then the city, the municipal entities can enforce the guarantee and require that Omni assign all of the contracts related to the project to urban renewal so that the project can be completed, and then we can seek compensation for damages. One of the, one of the provisions in the agreement is that there will be certain restrictions on other sites downtown and a no-subsidy zone. The agreement requires that the existing Cox Convention Center will not be used as the city's main convention center one year after the hotel has issued its certificate of occupancy. The city cannot permit another hotel on the Cox Convention Center site for 10 years. They cannot permit another hotel of over 200 rooms for 20 years. Omni has a right of first negotiation to develop a hotel on that site if, in sometime in the future, they believe that that makes sense. The next thing is the provision of a no-subsidy zone. So 15 years after the hotel receives its certificate of occupancy, there will be no public contribution or subsidy to a hotel within the no-subsidy zone. And we can go to the next slide. This is an illustration of the no-subsidy zone. Basically is from I-40 to Dean A. McGee, Russell M. Perry on the east, to Lee Avenue on the west. There is a carve-out for the First National Center in the, in the agreement. So, and this just shows you where the Cox Convention Center is in relation to the, to the project, and then again, where the park and the convention center and the hotel will be located.
And for the record, we've probably done one subsidy in that zone in the last 15 years or so with the Skirvin.
Right.
So it isn't an area that we've historically.
Within the last 15 years, yeah.
How many restrictive covenants has Omni done with other cities?
I don't know. They would have to answer that question. Just a little bit of context for the public participation that's a part of this project. Oklahoma City, the, the public participation that is a part of the agreement is 85.4 million. That represents about 36% of the project costs. And we've provided some comparisons to other projects that have been recently completed or underway, just to show you that we are in kind of the low end of the spectrum. Certainly Nashville at 61% is a pretty substantial subsidy to their project. And I, I will say that the footnotes are important. We did try to make this an apples-to-apples comparison, taking out the land, if, if the city's provided land, because our 85.4 million does not include the, the land. These are some examples in Oklahoma. There are several cities in Oklahoma that have built what I would call conference hotels or conference centers. Maybe the most notable one is Midwest City, where they own their conference hotel, and the city operates it. Go on. Okay. So in the, in the redevelopment agreement, there is a public contribution of 85.4 million. The public, the public participation will be the first monies paid towards construction. Once our money is paid, Omni's $150 million will be used for the construction. The payments from Omni, in the agreement, Omni is required to make certain payments from, to the city. As a part of the agreement, they will pay $200,000 annually as a land payment that will escalate by the CPI for 25 years, commencing the fifth year after the completion of the hotel. They will also be required to make a minimum ad valorem tax payment of 1.4 million for 30 years or until termination of the taxing increment financing district. And there is also a provision in the agreement where the city can possibly share, or can share in the upside of the hotel once it reaches a net operating income of excess of 20 million. So when the operate, when the, when the hotel operations exceed a net operating income of $20 million, the city will pay, the city will receive a 10%, 10% of that net operating income payment, subject to a cap of $15 million in the aggregate. This next part of the presentation will be with Craig Freeman, but before Craig gets up here and speaks, I'd like Bob Rowling to come up and make a few comments to you about the redevelopment agreement and about their, their history and how their company works. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rowling.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Mayor and council members. We appreciate you letting us come in here and give us, give our presentation. I want to introduce some of my team members. Mike Smith is our senior vice president of land and development. He's worked very hard on this agreement. Jim Caldwell is the CEO and president of Omni Hotels. And Blake Rowling is the president of TRT Holdings, which is the holding company which owns Omni and Gold's Gems and various other oil and gas investments. Let me tell you first a little bit about Omni, if you don't know. We have about 60 hotels operating in North America. We take a very local approach to building our properties. We don't want to build something here that's just a bland rooms box that you might see in any city in America. Really take time to understand what's going on in Oklahoma City and build accordingly. Food and, we're also not a hotel that we just throw up a hotel and, and hope people come. We take a lot of pride in our culinary experience. If you've been to our hotels, you'll see the kind of restaurants and food and beverage service that we provide. And it's, it's something that, that's out of the ordinary, I would say, with convention center hotels. Let me say what perhaps the most unusual thing about our structure is that we own and we operate our hotels. Most of the brands in America today, the Marriott's or Starwoods, Westons, whoever they are, they don't want to own any real estate. And all they want to do is manage and take a fee. We want to own and manage. That means we're, we're taking and making an investment in your community. We're not just looking for fees out of here. We want to be a stakeholder in your community. So a little, a little bit about, you know, what we've been doing in terms of these public-private ventures. I think Kathy showed you a few of them, but let me give you a, a little review. Like the Omni Fort Worth is 600 rooms. It was a public-private venture with the city. It completely changed the downtown in Fort Worth. The convention center activity quadrupled. It's, it's been fabulously successful for both the city and for us. The Omni Nashville Hotel, which is 800 rooms, they built a brand-new convention center, much like you're doing. We built an 800-room hotel across the street, and it's been, I would say, tell you that there's, I think there's 12 hotels in Nashville under construction right now. It set off a boom in Nashville. And, and our hotel and the convention center, much like you're doing here, is what started it. The Omni Frisco Hotel, we're building a hotel in partnership with Frisco and the Frisco Independent School District. Our partner is the Dallas Cowboys, the Jones family. We're opening this hotel next week. Frisco brought 20, well, the Cowboys and Frisco contributed 20.5 million to our hotel. To give you an idea, there, there, it's a, it's a booming area, Frisco is, it's north Dallas, if you haven't been there. And in the last couple of years, there have been multiple hotels opened. In fact, a Renaissance opened, I think, last week or two weeks ago. There's a brand-new Hilton, there's a fairly new Marriott. Nothing that's been built up there is comparable to what we put in in terms of the, the rooms and the quality. We open next week. Love for you all to come down and see what, see what, see what we're doing. And finally, Omni Louisville, we're building, we're opening there next March, building 600 rooms there. We're building 240 apartment units on top of it. It's about a $330 million project. And it's, again, a public-private venture with, with the city, and it's going to change across the street from the convention center, and it's going to change Louisville. I will say, in all of these, and, and I'm, Kathy pointed this, in all of these projects, the city's contribution as a percentage of the total project costs, with, with the exception of Frisco, is greater than what you all are contributing in this project. So let me talk about this project specifically. It's about 235 million, or early on, but that's, we know pretty much what it's going to cost. The hotel will feature 600 guest rooms, and the one thing that we're doing is, if you walk into one of our guest rooms, and I hope you've been to Dallas, or to Fort Worth, or to Louisville, or to Nashville, we're not, the, the rooms are unlike anything you will see in a convention center hotel. I mean, they're really high-quality. We've spent a lot of money in the rooms. And that's what we plan for this facility. We're having about 50,000 square feet of meeting space. We want a pool deck, spa, fitness facility. This is going to be a knocked-out hotel that you all will be unbelievably proud of. We expect to draw not only inventions, but we expect, let me tell you, it's an interesting statistic. We opened the Dallas Hotel about five years ago, the Convention Center Hotel downtown. It's a city-owned hotel, but Omni's the operator. And for the last two-plus years, something happened that we would have never expected. We've been running 90% occupancies on weekends, and that's primarily staycationers. We would have, we, we never thought that could happen. And they come, and it's primarily locals who come in and spend the weekend. If we'd have known it, we would have made the pool four times the size that we did. But it's been, and we really think that we can do that here. We think that this could be a facility that, you know, that locals come to and spend the weekend, and we're going to have great food and beverage offerings, and we think we can do the same thing here. And let me talk about, you know, the elephant in the room a little bit, the, the subsidy. We'll talk about the hotel subsidy and what you all are doing here. And I know there's, you know, disagreement, you know, among, among people on this. You know, you, you would bring 85 million to the project, we'd bring 150 million. We'll write a check, in Louisville, for example, there is no debt on Louisville. We're writing, we're writing a check every month to pay for that hotel. We plan to do the same thing here. There won't, we won't certainly initially put any debt on this property. We'll build it out of cash flow. You can be sure that the project will be completed. You can be sure that the project will be completed, completed on time, and completed to high quality. So the 85 million, as I said, that you will be investing will actually be less than what other cities are doing as a percentage of the total project. So you might say, well, why are we doing anything? Why is the city being required to do anything? And the answer is because these projects can't be built. In almost any city, there may be a few rare exceptions, but these projects can't be built without city subsidies. Let me tell you, for example, you just saw the Thomas PKF analysis there, and he showed you what he projects, what they project our rate to be in 2021 and our occupancy. Well, let me tell you that we've done a pro forma, and we have, we think we're going to do a lot better than he thinks we're going to do. We think we're going to have higher occupancy, and we think we're going to have a higher rate. But you know what? Our rate of return on this investment with your subsidy is 12.7%. Now, that's not very good. I mean, most of you in the investment business, in 12.7%, and there's a lot of risk to that. You know, we could go into recession. If our occupancies are what, you know, PW, sorry, HVS. Sorry, Tom. If our occupancy is what HVS has projected, then we're going to, we're not going to make any money in this hotel. And that's the reason that you just can't build these things and get the rates and occupancies in these cities to justify the investment without the subsidy. So let me address specifically Councilman Shahid, some of your comments, and Shahid, I'm sorry, and I've read some of your comments. Let's just say that wise men can disagree, okay? But on one of them, you said you kind of accused me of being a parasite and a predator for extracting the city subsidy. And I would say that, number one, we can disagree, but you're wrong on this. Nothing could be further from the truth. You know, a parasite is somebody, is something that depends on another organization to survive. I mean, what we're trying to do here is bring $150 million and inject it in this city to bring life and vitality to your downtown. That's what we want to do. Now, the second thing you said, you said that this is a massive investment in a dying industry full of minimum and low-paying jobs. Okay, I think that's a quote. So let me tell you, over 60% of the construction work is going to go to local subcontractors within this community. We're going to be having between 200 and 250 people working on the site every day and peaking at 600 to 700 people. Keep in mind that of the total 235 million that's invested, a great percentage of it is going to go straight into the pockets of local, hard-working Oklahoma City residents, a great percentage of it. When the hotel opens, let's talk about that. When the hotel opens, we're going to have about 70 full-time managers and 375 full-time equivalent employees. That's a total of 450 jobs. Yes, some are low-paying, but a lot of them are not. And we take a lot of pride in our training program at Omni. You're going to have 450 ambassadors selling Oklahoma City, this hotel. At our company, we have this thing that's called the trilogy. And what it does, it says that nobody has more value than anybody else. We have the customers, we have our associates, and then we have the ownership, which is us. They all, it's a trilogy. They all have equal value. So when you look at our associates that come to work for us, the 450 people that will be working here, they're part of our family. We're a privately-held company. We care about their lives. We care for them. We have a thing called the Omni Circle, where when somebody gets in trouble, people, we all chip in. We pay for their help. Our associate engagement survey among our associates that work for us, and we have 23,000 associates, I don't think there's anybody in the industry, just talk to some of our associates. We have people that have worked for us for longer than I've been around Omni, and they love the company, and we're dedicated to them. So yes, it's 450 jobs. They're not all high-paying jobs, but you know what? Even the low-paying jobs, they have an option, they get health benefits, retirement benefits, they get to participate in all those things that they choose. So it's not a dying industry at all. I mean, we have, go to Fort Worth, go to Nashville. These cities are being rejuvenated by convention center hotels, and we've been proud to be a part of it. Let me say one thing with regard to the subsidy. If, seven years from now, we're all sitting in this room, everybody's sitting there, and somebody says, oh my gosh, did we ever make a mistake? We paid Omni, we contributed 85 million to this project, and they could have done it without the subsidy. Well, you know what? Everybody in this city then will be cheering, because that means your convention center's full, your other hotels will be full, your restaurants will be full, and you know what? You will be collecting occupancy taxes, sales taxes, ad valorem taxes, far in excess of anything that any of us currently project. So that would be a great thing if the 85 million is too much. It would be a great thing for you and for me. So I want to just tell you, you know, we like this market. We think we can be real successful. You know, these conventions, these groups rotate, and we have the Convention Center Hotel in Dallas, we have the Convention Center Hotel in Fort Worth, in Nashville, in Atlanta, and we think we can bring a lot of group business here. And when you look at your surveys, the thing that's lacking in this market right now is really not the transient, it's the group. And so we want to be here. We think we can do a great job. We're excited about the other things you're doing, your convention center, your park, your streetcar project, you know, what's going on in Breaktown. We're excited about being here. Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it and appreciate the opportunity to work with you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. All right. All right. We're going to take a look at the financing plan that we developed. So as we've talked through the benefits that the hotel brings to us and the opportunities that we have going forward, we've developed a funding plan or a financing plan that was in association with the public participation that's included within the agreement. And so when we looked at that, the idea right now, and we've worked through, I want to mention too, that we've got a team that's worked together. The Alliance for Economic Development has worked with the manager's office, the finance department, the municipal council's office. We've worked with our consultants. We've worked with our financial advisors to develop a financing plan. And this is really a preliminary financing plan that we have right now. As we move closer to the date that we actually issue the bonds, that may change some, but based on that and the need that we have for the public participation, the plan is that the Economic Development Trust will issue bonds that would be repaid, it would be revenue bonds, repaid over a 25-year period, and they'd be backed by a moral obligation of the city. So this is a higher level of commitment from the city to ensure that the bonds will be repaid to get us more favorable bond ratings and then more favorable bond or borrowing costs. And as we get closer, as I said, that there may be some changes in what we have in this financing plan, but based upon that financing plan, that led us to our funding plan. And the funding plan, we had several goals, we looked at it, because any time you go into a project like this, there are risks. And based on the fact that there are risks, we want to develop a funding plan that helps to manage that, that helps to strengthen the plan so that we can manage through challenges. One of the planned goals we have was to maximize the sources of revenue generated by the hotel. And you'll see when we get into the plan, it's about 50% of the gross revenues that are generated from the funding plan come directly from the hotel. So those are revenues that wouldn't be available for other purposes. They wouldn't even be available if it weren't for the fact of the hotel existing. We want to provide multiple sources of revenue or funding to match the cash flows with those revenue sources to the debt service requirements of the financing. And we also want to have the multiple sources to help us manage the challenges that we know you'll experience over a 25-year period. Use available sources of revenue from other successful projects. There are many different economic development projects that have been successful within the city, and many of them are in a position now they can contribute back to help support a project like this. And then finally, we wanted to structure the plan to include a revenue stabilization fund. And that revenue stabilization fund would be structured so that any revenues that are flowing in that are in excess, you know, from the plan, that are in excess of the debt service requirements in any year, would flow into a revenue stabilization fund, which would then provide further strength to be able to weather challenges that could come. And so we have that support. If we build that revenue stabilization fund, we have that additional support that if any year we didn't have sufficient revenues to cover the debt service from our funding plan, we could draw against that revenue stabilization fund and be able to use that to provide an additional buffer, additional strength in the plan before we would be at a point that we would need to rely on operating funds. So our goal really is to protect this so that this plan can stand on its own. So as we look at the funding plan and look at the multiple sources we have, the plan is structured as a package of revenue sources. It's diverse sources, both in the type and the timing of those sources. The amounts with, on the funding page, as you look at the individual amounts, those are the present value of the different cash flows. And so we tried to look at it as a low, medium, and high success. And this really refers primarily to the success of the hotel, but also to the success of these other projects. And tried to look at that as a funding plan, the present value of what these cash flows could produce to help us in funding this project. The plan provides a reasonable range. And when you look at this range of high, medium, and low success, we don't expect any one of those to come through for every single source. What we expect is realistically, any one of the sources individually in a year could perform above or below a high and low success. But we believe it's a reasonable range when you look at it as a package of funding sources. And so that was the basis for this. And so about, again, about 50% of the gross revenues that are produced come from the hotel or related to the hotel, which is that top section of the chart. And so when we look at these, I'll just walk through the revenue sources that we have. First, within the Tax Increment Finance District, we'll have the hotel property tax. And Omni has agreed to a minimum tax, as Kathy said, of 1.4 million dollars a year. On our low success and medium success, we just took that 1.4 million dollars and took that out throughout the life of the project. On the high success, we used more, closer to what their pro forma was. Their pro forma shows that they would pay above that lower level, the minimum tax requirement, agreement. But so we use that on the high success, use something closer to their pro forma. On the hotel sales tax and occupancy tax, we looked at Omni's pro forma with our hotel consultants. We used their pro forma as our high success, and then backed off of that both on the occupancy and on our average daily rate as we looked at the medium and the low success. And as Mr. Rowling said, if we went down to the low success, this would probably be one of the lowest-performing Omnis that they would have in the country. So it's something that's on a very low side, I think, a very conservative and reasonable look at what we would expect in the revenues that would be provided. The State Leverage Act funds are matched against the revenues that would be generated by the hotel sales tax and hotel occupancy tax. And I wanted to point out that on both of those, we've only used the 2%. The 2%, I mean, we've used a portion of the general fund, sales tax, and a portion of the convention and visitors' support from the hotel tax, because the other taxes that we have are dedicated, and so we've only used that lower portion of the hotel occupancy tax and sales tax. The land payment is based upon the payment that's agreed to of the $200,000 a year. In the medium and high success, we used a little bit of an inflation factor on those. When you move down into the other existing sources that we have from these other successful projects, the Skirvin lease and mortgage payment that are part of the agreement, on the low end, we assumed a few years in, the Skirvin sells. And if it sells, then you have to pay off the mortgage, and you monetize basically or capitalize the value of that lease. And then we would have that revenue to be able to set aside and help pay our costs, but that's actually the low scenario. We just used, based on what our experience has been, just a medium and a high success for the other two scenarios, for the performance of the hotel. On TIF 2, we assume on the low level that we have just the current values that we currently, the projects that we know are being built now or have been incentivized, and used no additional growth. And then in medium-high, we assumed additional growth and maximizing that revenue source. On the Core to Shore TIF, that Core to Shore TIF would actually also include the hotel. We broke those out so we could show those individually, but it does include the BOK Park Plaza Building. And all we've included in the Core to Shore TIF portion here is the estimated value that would be available to the city on, depending on how the building is valued, at a high to medium and low success. We did not include any other growth or any other development. You think over a 25-year period within that area, the likelihood is there's going to be additional growth and additional development. On TIF 8, currently within the Devon TIF, that's funded all the wonderful infrastructure improvements and the streetscape improvements that we've seen downtown, there's actually additional revenue that's paid based on their minimum tax agreement that exceeds the amount of the debt service. We have assumed on the low level that we could use that additional revenue to be able to help with the project for about nine years, and then we maximize it with the 10 years left in that TIF for the medium and the high success. And then the Bass Pro lease, again, we just use differing levels of success of that project. And actually, in all of our levels, probably the high-level success is close to about what we've had on average. So we've been pretty conservative on that with our assumptions. As I said before, you know, we know that we're going to experience challenges over 25 years of a financing plan. And because of that, we want to structure this as a package. And that's why it's so important that we make sure that as we go forward and work towards, there's several steps that Kathy will talk about that need to be taken to be able to make these revenues available and get them in place, but as we move forward, that we keep all of these revenues in this plan and that we maximize the revenues that are in the plan, allow that to flow into a stabilization fund. And the way the funding plan is written, that would flow into the stabilization fund, which could be used to pay down debt more quickly, or, once it reaches a certain level, could be used also to flow back into other economic development projects, just like some of these projects are doing right now for this project. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to Kathy and let her wrap up with the next steps that we take. Could I ask a question?
Wait till we get through with the presentation.
Just a few slides on some of the next steps. There are several steps that are associated with implementing the funding plan. Those include amending some of the TIF project plans for the downtown TIF, for the Devon Headquarters TIF. So we've just kind of spelled out what some of those basic things that will have to come through city council. We will also need to amend the agreements that we have between the city and the redevelopment authority for Bass Pro Shops and the Skirvin lease. Sometime in the summer of 2018, there will be an Economic Development Trust bond issue. So the underwriting team is already under contract. They'll be putting the preliminary official statement together, doing rating presentations, a feasibility study. There'll be an Economic Development Trust resolution on the debt issuance and city council approval of the debt. In summary, I just, I want to remind us that, you know, the reason that we went down the path of the MAPS projects was to encourage additional private investment in Oklahoma City. And with the MAPS I projects, we've seen over $5 billion in new investment in downtown or in a wider area of Oklahoma City. I think we'll see the same kinds of private investments with all of the MAPS projects. And this project is the first step towards making investments associated with the convention center. Couple things to point out. The 85.4 million dollars in public participation is the most that the city will contribute. If the project costs go above $235.5 million, Omni will be, they'll have to pick up the difference. So that is the most that the city's on the line for. But the real reason that we do these, you know, the real reason we do these projects is for the economic impact that they generate, for the jobs that they create, for the spin-off income in the local economy, for the taxes that they generate. So just as a reminder, over a 10-year period, it's estimated that the economic impact of the convention center with a convention center hotel is over $1.3 billion in net new spending. The funding plan is conservative and designed to limit risk for the city, designed to protect the city's operating budget and general fund. Public participation is largely funded by revenues generated by the hotel itself and does not increase taxes. So our recommendation to you today is that you move forward with approving the redevelopment agreement, with approving the hotel funding plan, and taking, directing staff to take the steps necessary to bring the other items forward to implement the funding plan and the redevelopment agreement. So with that, I think we're ready for questions.
All right. I assume everybody on the council wants to talk, so we probably ought to have some sort of order here. We have a handful of people, not really a whole lot, that want to speak. We want to hear from them first, if they have signed up, and then we'll make one round of the council comments, and then hopefully we'll have a vote. Jenny Love Meyer.
Loves is proud to call Oklahoma City our home.
Jenny, could you give your name and address for the record? I'm sorry.
Sure. Jenny Love Meyer with Loves, Travel Stops, P.O. Box 26210.
Yeah, thank you.
Loves is proud to call Oklahoma City our home. As such, we host many corporate meetings here and would like to do so as we continue to grow our company. We're excited about the possibilities of the new convention center, as well as adjoining hotel, and those possibilities to allow us to continue meeting here in Oklahoma City. to allow us to continue meeting here in Oklahoma City. The impression that we make when visitors come to our community is very important. This new facility will dramatically change the experience that visitors have when they come here. As the executive charged with making Loves meetings a success, having a quality headquarters hotel would be a true asset for our market. I encourage you to support this proposal. Thanks very much.
All right. Thanks, Jenny. Blaine Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Blaine Thompson, 12108 Southwest 7th, and GM at the Coal Court. You know, as a downtown, or as a hotelier in general, it's not often that I would agree to stand up here and speak on behalf of more hotel rooms coming into the market, especially in a, excuse me, especially in a market like this, that's currently at 2,300 and, you know, close to double by 2020. But a project like this is a little bit different. Most hotels don't generate demand. This is a property that actually, I believe, will generate demand. I've seen some of the other projects, and I'm not here to speak on behalf of Omni as much as disagreement in general, but I have seen some of the other projects, and I have seen where, in many cities, that they've done this, the hotel rates have actually increased. And our projections, you know, what we look at is actually a little better than what HVS has. I'm certainly hoping on that. You know, when a downtown hotel is here, we rely oftentimes on conventions to come into town. Those are the big numbers, the ones at the top of the HVS presentation. When those are here, they can make your month. We, we benefit greatly from the activity around the Convention Center with room nights, with food and beverage opportunities, and revenues that come with that. Our community, we believe, could double in the number of meetings with this property, and more than double the amount of room nights that our community sees on an annual basis. I think this hotel is a win for all of us in the community and the hotel industry, and I strongly encourage your, your support of this agreement. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Blaine. John Womastek? Good morning.
John Womastek, 4319 Northwest 59th Street. We've heard some great presentations here. I think a case has been made for perhaps two privately funded hotels instead of a single Convention Center Hotel. I don't see the need for such a big subsidy in this idea that other hotels would flourish and take, take root in the, in the wake of this massive subsidy. Look at all the hotels in Bricktown. Who's to say Hilton and some of the others wouldn't just be proud to have this same spot? A couple of them paired up together with meeting space in between. I don't know. I assume that's been looked at, and I think this is a better TIF, a better plan than some of the others we've seen. This is really good. But I don't know that some of these other options have really been looked at. Also, you know, we're completely neglecting, we're not talking about education. I know that's not why we're here today. But when we're looking at this, and we're looking at what we've not done for the kids and the schools, and the state's not doing anything, and the Oklahoma City schools, their school board, they're not really taking care of it. I think it's our responsibility. I think it's your responsibility. We've got all this money that we want to give away. And who's to say that if we invested it in people instead of a hotel, of buildings, we might not come up with another Mick Cornet, another Aubrey McClendon, Harold Hamm, Larry Nichols, and so many other good people like yourselves that would invest in the community and put so much more back into the community than just a single hotel. We need to ignite and fire up the imaginations of our community and our teachers, and get kids a real chance to grow in our public schools. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Arturo Delgado?
Good morning. Arturo Delgado, 6007 South Country Club Drive, South Oklahoma City. Good morning. My name is Arturo Delgado, business manager with the Labor's Union, located right here in the heart of Oklahoma City. I'm a proud South Sider, strong roots in South Oklahoma City. So I want to thank Mayor, City Council, for the opportunity to speak today, for the community, or, sorry, I had to write this down. I'm not much of a public speaker. Commitment to building a better city for all of our residents. I want to especially thank Councilman John Perez, who has been strong advocate for using public dollars to incentivize training and good-paying families supporting jobs for living, for people that live in our community. The Labor's are here to support the new Convention Center Hotel project and welcome Omni Hotels to Oklahoma City, because we know it is a huge opportunity to invest in our people in Oklahoma, in Oklahoma City. I'm here because we want the opportunity to work with Oklahoma City and Omni Hotels to ensure we recruit local folks who need good jobs. We take the time to train them, work safely, and provide them with the skills to be successful. And then we actually put them to work together to a top-quality Convention Center Hotel that we can all be proud of in the community. The Labor's are proud to provide the best construction career workers trained in the industry. We're also proud to provide a skilled local workforce. So if we, so we hope to work with local contractors that will commit to hiring local folks. The Labor stand with Councilman Perez to call on each of you to support the important project, but if, only if, we can guarantee provisions that provide community benefit to folks that are struggling to make ends meet and need the opportunity to start real careers in the construction industry. Thank you for your time, for doing the right thing, supporting regular working folks. Thank you.
Thanks, Arturo. Michael Washington?
Yes, 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 yes. Let's not drink tea yet. Michael Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Turn it from you. I applaud. What y'all want to do today? But I don't agree with it. Y'all heard me? Now then, why should I have to spend $85 million? Are you ready for this? To put out-of-towners or whoever to come in and to create a hotel chain, excuse me, not a hotel chain, which they already have a chain going because they have independent dens and all those other places. But why should we invest in that project, expending gobs of millions of dollars in a project that's likely, from their own words, to possibly fail? Are you ready for this? And in a tax increment district, you know, I'm told that money in a tax increment district is designed for blighted areas. Now then, are we saying that this is a blighted area in which this hotel needs to be filled? No, we're not, are we? Because if that's the case, then the whole Oklahoma City, downtown Oklahoma City is an ablated area. All right? Now, according to this gentleman here who spoke very eloquently, I'm kind of jealous too because maybe kind of topped me. But anyhow, you're speaking about $150 million to be invested into this project. Now, why would you need, first of all, my $85,000, excuse me, $85 million, or my hard-earned taxpayers' dollars, when we have other areas, it's already been proven, are you ready for this? You have many, many, many hotels downtown already who are likely to be put out of business. Why? Because now more people are going to be drawn to here than may have been drawn to these others. So are we really looking deeply into those areas? I don't think we are. Okay, now, not only that, but you have a lady here, Ms. Kathy O'Connor, who's basically has all the, the development, all the skills, and all the room and support to get this thing passed. Why? Because she has, she wears many hats in the very economic development plans here in Oklahoma City. Are you ready for this? A former, ex-assistant city manager, now who currently is executive director of Urban, not Urban, but Urban Development. Then she's also a board member of the Economic Development Trust. Okay, wearing these hats was supposed to be available to others who would possibly want these jobs. I don't think that this is a project that we should support. Now, we're told that this Omni Hotel is supposed to bring in 450 jobs. Okay, and the man, the gentleman just admitted that it's going to be not a lot of high-paying jobs. So in and of itself tells me, again, we're at a risk factor in the economy. And again, he's already stated, the gentleman to my right, that this is likely a small growing population. So if you're already a small growing population, why would you want to put millions, unless, of course, they're going to bring some out of Istanbul or, you know, some other place like that, you know, to drop in, in the Skype. Now...
Michael, can you wrap it up?
Yeah, I got to stand up here. I need to talk longer than this. This is not giving me enough time. Okay, now, according to Kathy O'Connor, to, Ms. O'Connor, I don't want to say Kathy, we've had pretty good relationships, I can call her that. But anyhow, now this is going to be a 45-year project. Okay, now, irregardless of whether it fails or not, are you ready for this? We are supposed to say and agree, I don't agree that it's going to be a $235 million project. I believe there's going to be some problems there for, because why? Now, we know if you ask for us to pay more than half of the amount of the $150 million they're going to put up, then naturally, nine times out of 10, it's going to probably be a little bit more than that. Why should we have to pay more than 75, or rather, 75 million, rather than, how come we just can't pay half of what should they themselves put up the rest, the other 10 million? Make it 150 million and...
Michael, I think you've, you've exceeded your time. I think you made your point, though. Thank you. All right. We can start this way, or we can start this way. James, you want to go first or last? I'll give you, give you the option.
Sure, I'll go first.
All right.
Even though I didn't really want to talk. But, because this is a, I mean, this has been kind of a tough decision for me, just because I'm not an ends justify the means sort of guy. And so just, this whole idea conflicts with two philosophical things, at least in, in this. And really, nothing's really changed since the last time we talked about this, when we authorized the, for me, I, I still think that we're confusing our needs and our wants. And, and that I don't like government infusing themselves into the private market. I've said numerous times that I trust the market to do what needs to be done. And so I completely understand with, I mean, I, I really appreciate Omni. And I said this first time, this is actually a better deal than I thought we were going to get. And I agree that the plan for this hotel that is going to happen does need a subsidy. I just still question the fact of whether or not that is the hotel that we actually need. And I, because I, I just, I truly believe that the, that the free market fills needs. And so, and that's probably why I'm going to vote against it, because I'm, I'm just not an ends justify the means. Because I, I do think in the end, this is going to be a good, it's going to benefit the city. It's just how we get there. All right. Ed?
So we, we've heard about an hour and a half uninterrupted proposal, or proponents of this hotel advocate for what in my mind was decided many years ago, it's decided now. So I'll try and make whatever points I can. If you listen to the presentation, it'd be crazy not to do a hotel with a Convention Center. And of course, that's what the Convention Sports and Leisure Study told us in 2009. But we didn't bring it up at the time of the MAPS 3 campaign, I believe, because we didn't want to chance the people voting on it. We've heard arguments here about an $85 million subsidy. And let me just address that first. It's not an $85 million subsidy. It's, if you were, if you were able to borrow that $85 million at 4% interest, you're talking about $135 million when you include the interest payments. Then the parking garage, you have to acquire the land, you have to come up with a $10 million shortfall that COPTA doesn't have. You have to, I believe this is the only time you've had a restrictive covenant from Omni. You don't know what adaptive reuse projects that is going to inhibit, like the spaghetti warehouse trying to turn it into a hotel. There are lots of hidden costs, so the number is not $85 million. But my overarching, I have, I have specific issues, but the overarching issue is, if this is so compelling, if the data is so, the empirical data is so overwhelming, your, your study on the economic impact, take it to the people. Let the people vote on it. That, Mr. Rowling, is my primary objection. And I want you to understand, I mean, we can talk about whatever adjectives I use or, or, but that is the primary problem I have with this, is that we are going so far out of our way to avoid transparency and to let the people decide whether they want to make the investment. It was only four weeks ago, four weeks ago, that we debated a sales tax initiative to put on the ballot six weeks from now on September 12th. Mr. Rowling is going, saying he's going to pay $150 million in cash, right, while we're going to borrow the $85 million. When we do any other bond, right, general obligation bonds, we're going to have like 14 different things that people are going to vote on on September 12th. We take that to the people to borrow this kind of money. We could have done the same thing he's doing, right? We put together a $240 million sales tax package for Streets next month. We could have put this $85 million on that initiative, let the people vote on it in six weeks, and we could have paid for it in cash. We could have paid $85 million instead of $135 million. But we didn't. And is anyone brave enough to say any reason, why we didn't do that? Other than this, we don't want the people to vote on this. We don't want to be responsive to the wishes of the people. Put it on the ballot for the people and run a campaign. Put, you could run, the chamber could run a $3 million campaign. You could, you could use all this empirical data, all these arguments, flood the people with all these arguments, and then let them vote on whether they want to spend $135 million. Or if, if they did it on a sales tax, and you get the money upfront, let them, let them vote on it. Because that, that's the whole, right, that's the whole power of MAPS, is we said, we're not going to borrow money. We're going to pay for these things as we go. We're not going to pay interest. But at the time, we knew that this, that this day would come. We knew that the hotel was an integral part of this. People in the Finance Department said, you should put money in this on the MAPS 3, because this day is going to come and a subsidy is going to be needed. But we didn't. We withheld this part of the story from the people because we were afraid of how they might vote. And that, to me, is the, is the greatest shortfall of this whole project, is that we've gone out of our way to not allow the people to have a say in this. So maybe parasitic is not the right word, because I agree, you could do it without us. If you can pay $150 million in cash with the assets you have, you can borrow $85 million at very favorable terms. You can do this without us. Maybe there's another word where you take money from people without asking first. Maybe that's more important, appropriate. Predatory, I think, absolutely applies. We have heard these numbers. We have heard these studies over the years. If I hear you, the HVS study correctly, you would have us believe that the economic impact is basically dependent on us missing out on conventions based on two variables, that the, that the exhibit space wasn't available, maybe the dates, and also the block rooms. And because we're missing out on those two variables, those two variables are going to result in all these conventions coming here and all this economic impact to the city. Well, the Convention Sports and Leisure Study looked at several variables that are inhibiting convention performance in Oklahoma City, five in particular that you didn't mention at all today. Number one was the lack of airport access, the lack of direct flights into Oklahoma City. That has not changed considerably since 2009. Number two was weather. That certainly has not changed and will not change. Number three was that at that time, we were the largest city in America without public transit on Sundays or in the evenings. And in 2017, we are still the largest city in America without public transit in the evenings or on Sundays. That has not changed. There will be a streetcar that will take people to certain destinations, but if they want to go to Penn Square Mall or any of the other amenities in Oklahoma City, that factor has not changed. And it is going to inhibit some of the numbers that you're claiming is going to come to the city of Oklahoma City from this investment. Number four was that the study was very clear, you don't have the CBB budget to go out and be competing for these type of conventions. Number five, and maybe most important, city, this is not, this is a bloodbath. Everybody's doing what we're doing. Everybody is making these kind of investments. But the, the number, Mr. Rowling talked about transient and group rates, right? There's two, two basic categories of people that stay in a hotel. One is transient. You go, you stay in a hotel to watch a Thunder game or whatever, you're traveling to Oklahoma City or whatever. The other is group, blocks of group rates. Over the last, since 2006 to 2016... Over the last, since 2006 to 2016, transient rooms have gone up, group rates have been completely flat over the last 10 years. Right? So that is not growing. But all these convention center hotels are sprouting up all over the place and all these convention centers are growing. So everybody's competing for the same conventions. So what does it take to get a convention to a city? It's not just block rooms. It's not just exhibit space. It's that you have to give away the exhibit space. You have to give it for free to the conventions. So cities like Dallas spend $5 to $6 million a year in free rent on their exhibit space. Chicago, $15 million in free rent. San Diego, $6 million. Los Angeles, $12 million. Are we ready to spend those kind of millions of dollars in free exhibit space to try and get the conventions that he's claiming that we're going to get? Because it's not just about a public subsidy for a hotel. It's about, are you willing to play the incentive game to pay these conventions millions of dollars to come here? Because just having block rooms is not enough. That's not enough to get these conventions. It's going to cost millions and millions more. It, it's been decided, I, I can, I, I do have one question. Do we have the pro forma, do we have access to the pro forma that Omni has done? Does the public have access to that? Can we all review that?
We have a draft pro forma.
No, I, I mean, can I have it? Can the public have it? Can I look at it?
Yes. No. We'll give it to you.
Because what, what we're voting on today says that the pro forma provided by the qualified developers, based on that, the council finds that it's necessary in the best interest of the public. Well, I haven't reviewed that pro forma. I haven't seen it. It hasn't been provided to me or the public. And I'd like to see how that compares to the STONE study and all the other studies. Because one theory I have is that Omni isn't necessarily, they don't necessarily believe the convention thesis is going to get them across the tran, the finish line. I think they want to compete in the transient market against our existing hotel stock. And I think that that's part of the reason that we get this unique present that other cities are not getting, which is the restrictive covenant. So I would like to see that pro forma. I mean, when we go to Wall Street and we have our revenue bond statement, the pro forma's going to be in there. This resolution that we're voting on today says, I've already read it, which I haven't. I mean, I'd like to see that and I'd like the public to get to review this. This, this is a project that's just about as big as the convention center, right? With the construction costs, 190, I mean, and the public hears about the details on Friday in the Oklahoman, right? So they get three, four days to process all this, right? And then we have the one and a half hour presentation, and then you have my five minutes of opposition. And that's it. But nobody gets to look over all this, including us. We had a presentation two weeks ago. You, you gave us sheets, we have to give them back to you at the end of the meeting. There's no pro forma, there's no getting to look at these studies ahead of time. It's just all put out here and then, and then we're supposed to do it. Run a campaign. The benefit of a campaign is the public gets to look at all this stuff, put, let the people vote on this, right? And then you can have very detailed analysis over time, not just a four-day processing period for the public and then a dog and pony show here. Let, run a real campaign. If you win, the benefit is $50 million in interest costs you don't have to pay. That, that's the real tragedy of this whole decade-long saga, is that you did a convention sports and leisure study that to this day is still being withheld from the public. We have gone out of our way to minimize transparency and to shield the public from having a say in the matter. After all, it is their money. They deserve to have a say. Thanks.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I'm going to be very brief. I have some personal convictions. The people that are on the team know my personal convictions. The key word there is personal. They apply to me, and I don't think I should force them down somebody else's throat. A couple of convictions that I have, I believe it's best to do things with no debt. That's best. That does not mean you never use debt. So I want that very clear. Uh, the next conviction that I have is that I believe in little government intervention. Small government, I believe, is better. However, when you take that, for example, to, uh, do we need to add policemen to our police force for public safety? The answer is obviously yes. So those two are in, have to be balanced out. I, I think that applies here. And looking at this, this happens to be, I believe, a good business deal. And so, as a good business deal, I'm going to vote for it. Do I wish there were some differences? You never get everything in a business deal that you want. But I think this is a solid business deal. Uh, I've had the opportunity to look at the impact that this has on other hotels. Uh, one of the things that I've learned is that to run a convention hotel is different than running a, a normal hotel where you don't offer food service. And we, I, one of the questions I had earlier in this is, why didn't any of our Oklahoma City hoteliers bid on this project? And the answer was, I'll give them back, they don't possess the expertise in an outfit like Omni possesses or the other people who have submitted quotes for this. So looking at this, uh, if you have questions of me, you're welcome to use my cellphone, 213-6185, but I'm going to vote for it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. You said that number was, what again, 21? Never. 213-6185. Councilman, I, I kid. Uh, I, I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things. You know, my, my pastor came in this morning and offered the prayer. The first thing he talked to me about this morning, uh, when I met him over at the mayor's office, was that he's on, he's part of the delegation that decides where the SBC convention is going to be, Southern Baptist Convention. And he's always wanted to bring it to Oklahoma City. They can't do it. Can't do it. We don't have the resources. Um, but he talked about, you know, if this thing goes through, he's like, man, I can't wait to try and, and bring them here. They all want to come here. Um, everyone talks about, you know, the resurgence of Oklahoma City and they love it. They just don't have the resources here that they need for conventions specifically like that. Um, the other thing I would have is, I would love to know what the economic impact was this past weekend. I mean, downtown, of course, was flooded. Um, and if you throw Last Night in there too, that impact was huge. Um, without the Chesapeake, I don't think we're going to have four back-to-back Garth Brooks things. I don't know that Paul McCartney comes in. Um, Chicksaw Ballpark, I think, had 9,000 people Friday night and Saturday night, which is kind of crazy looking at how the traffic was down here for the Garth Brooks concerts. So, um, yeah, this, I've got to admit, this proposal goes against a lot of different things for me personally too, Larry, but, um, when I look at the benefit for the city long-term, and yeah, there's things in here I wish we would have done differently, but uh, I, I think it's worth the risk. I think the risk has been minimized. And, uh, so, for the sake of the city, I'm going to support it.
David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, first of all, I'd like to begin by saying I agree with Mr. Washington on one of his comments. Uh, yes, sir. And it's, it's, it's a way we define the term blighted, um, and as he related to downtown Oklahoma City being blighted. So, everybody knows I work Saturdays and, and this Saturday, this past Saturday, I was coming in late because we were watching our grandchildren. And so, about 10:30, I'm driving to our office, and I see this older couple walking back from the core part of downtown back to 21C Hotel. And so I'm stopped and they looked at me, I guess they thought I was an accountant or something, and said, hey, we were trying to find some shops down here. And I said, I don't know of any. We truly, and if you looked at those maps...
Park for her, it's right on the corner of Park and...
Okay, but I don't think on Saturdays they're open. So the point is, if you look at those maps that we were looking at earlier today, um, those locations that have an active new convention center had a very large number of retail, restaurants, uh, entertainment facilities. I mean, we've got restaurants, I understand that, and entertainment facilities. And if you go far enough away from the core part of downtown on the weekends, you can probably find a retail store. But when I go out of town, especially if we get a half a day off or something, to just walk around and find something that you could buy as a souvenir or something to take back to the family is a common experience for me. We have nothing. I anticipate, once the convention center is completed, this hotel is, uh, built, we'll see an explosion of growth. We truly do lack a strong retail presence in downtown Oklahoma City. And I'm sorry, I just don't consider what's going on in Bricktown as a strong retail center. Uh, and I know up on North Broadway, Meg, you've got some things going on up there, but really, if you think in terms of the core part of downtown, so I felt embarrassed to those, that older couple looking for something, uh, down here. We do not have it. So, Mr. Washington, from that perspective, we are a blighted area. And I would suggest this, I think Councilman Pettis would love to serve as a mentor for you. You've got a lot of potential, you just need some guidance.
Thank you. I'm just waddling now.
And so, talk with Councilman Pettis after the meeting and you two could...
I'll give you some...
Work out, some arrangement. Uh, but anyway, so, let's go back to the points that we've been discussing. Craig, this is the question I was going to ask you if you've got just a second. And I'm not going to ask you to explain, uh, present value concepts, but the numbers you were presenting were the present values of future revenues.
That's correct.
If we didn't use the present value figure, those numbers would be much greater.
Yes, yes.
Tremendously larger.
Each one of the sources has different timing of the revenues, and that's what we're trying to match up with that combination, but you're right, it'd be significantly more.
I know, I understand.
Yes.
Okay. So the point I'm just trying to make though, is as we talk about the interest, certainly if we wanted to project several years from now, we had a specific project, the MAPS program is an ideal way to raise money and not incur interest expense. But the numbers we're looking at would be much greater if we used their future values as opposed to their present values. So the present value concept takes out the interest component and matches future dollars with current dollars. So that revenue source that you're reflecting is a much larger amount, tremendously larger. So I think we're confusing people when we say, oh, but we've got all this interest. No, we don't. What the analysis we're trying to present takes the interest component out of there. If we wanted to bring in the interest, we could gross up those, uh, future revenues and we would still see that I anticipate we'll have much more revenue from this activity than what it'll cost us. But here's the other question. With respect to these bonds, will we have the ability to redeem them early should revenue exceed?
Yes.
So that would eliminate the interest component and it would reduce the present value cost of those numbers.
Some of the scenarios we looked at, generally when we do a bonds, we'll have a call, call feature on those bonds so they'll be callable. Generally, it's around 10 years. Um, you pay quite a bit to get it lower than that, but you're, you're exactly right. With those revenues that we expect to come in, that is a potential in the future if everything's on that higher level of success, that we have that potential that we could at least pay down a large portion, but even potentially several years in, pay off the full amount.
Yeah. So it's, I really think we need to focus on the fact, our part of this that we're green to is, is 36% of the total cost of the hotel. And so, that's what I think we need to focus on. Um, just a couple of more points. So as Kathy, I think, made the presentation, uh, the MAPS I program that began in the early 90s, we raised 350-some million dollars for these various projects, a part of the first MAPS program. An earlier study by OSU, uh, at the time, this is a pretty old one, was suggesting that it created, uh, private investments of over $3 billion. Now Kathy has more current numbers and, and then, and her figures was $5 billion. I think this has the same potential, uh, and I think it's going to occur rather quickly, especially once we get the convention center, the Core to Shore Park, this hotel in place. We'll see tremendous growth on the west side of the park, and I would suspect the total private investment will greatly exceed the, uh, multiple that we've seen with the first MAPS. Now, let's compare that with the multiple effect we had on MAPS for kids. Much harder to, uh, evaluate. We spent 470 million. Can we identify private investment that came about as a result of that money? No, we can't. Now, was it important to make that type of investment? Absolutely. I think it was critical to get the, uh, public education system on a stronger position from a facility standpoint, but it did not create the same economic impact that something like this will. Again, compare our downtown area, this blighted area, with those areas where Omni currently has a convention center hotel. It is night and day as far as what we see, and it's just going to spur additional revenue for the community and certainly for the city in additional sales tax. And I'm sorry I didn't have my notes better outlined. And I appreciate, uh, Mr. Rattoriell's comments. We certainly want to employ local individuals in the construction of this hotel, and that's going to generate a lot of economic activity. You know, we combine Oklahoma City and Tulsa, it generates over 2/3 of the economic activity of the entire state. Oklahoma City is almost twice the size of, of Tulsa in terms of its economic impact. This is just going to continue to accelerate that and will certainly, uh, receive the benefit. And finally, uh, I'm not trying to match point for point, but the issue about not taking this to the public for a vote. The sales tax, uh, vote that's coming up, our, our previous and, and proposed MAPS programs, those programs all created a tax on the public, on the citizens of Oklahoma City. That's why we had to go out and vote. This does not, it's a complex issue. We went through an hour and a half, and I know some people did not take proper notes up here, uh, yes, on that presentation. Just imagine trying to make this same type of technical, technical presentation to the general public. It would be challenging at best. I enjoyed, there's a lot of numbers, but again, the general public may not be able to follow these issues as easily. But the fact is, there's no tax on them. This funding is coming from existing sources of, and, and the hotel will eventually pay for itself as far as our investment. Thank you.
Meg?
Boy, I'm so glad David went before me. He really covered a lot of the issues, I want to say. I think it's obvious from the comments I've made in previous meetings and, and in lots of other private conversations, that I am incredibly supportive of this project. It is exactly what the city needs. It's exactly the kind of thing that we've seen happen before and has put this city on its incredible trajectory of this renaissance that we're living in. So I think what I'd really like to say is, sitting through this hour and a half presentation has made me so proud of the team that we have working for us. City employees and our consultants are absolutely outstanding, and you're all sitting in this room. It's, um, you know, when you talk about the creativity it took to put this together, Craig and Brandon had the, um, the work, two years of work that went into risk mitigation. And I think that's one of the biggest things that we need to be aware of is, you know, I know you come every day knowing that your job is to protect the city's general fund, protect our citizens, and, um, for making a bad investment. And it's taken two years and the cooperation of the Omni team to get us both where we, I think we have as, as fair a deal as, as we were going to get. I think it's a much better deal than maybe we thought we were going to get when we started down this path a couple of years ago. The question about blighted is really an interesting one, but if you stand in the middle of the park or at the site where the hotel is to be built and look... middle of the park or at the site where the hotel is to be built and look around, there is nobody that can tell me that that is not blighted. There is nothing there. There's a promise that there's going to be a convention center, and there's a promise there's going to be a park, and they're moving incredible amounts of dirt right now. There will be all of those things, but right now, there's not. And it's a leap of faith to invest $150 million of your own money on a piece of dirt that right now is an electric substation. I mean, it just, as a real estate developer, it's a huge jump to see this. And I don't think I want to address all the other issues. There are lots of adjectives that have been used today, and one of the ones that I have found disappointing over many, many years is this conversation about information that we've withheld. Saying that somebody's withheld information is akin to saying that they've been lying, and I find that really offensive. I have for years, and I just need to say that once again. I'm excited to be part of this council when we have the opportunity to bring this project forward. Thank you.
John?
Councilman Greenwell, you actually left me speechless on that one. I'm still trying to recover from that comment.
Which one?
Thank you, Brother Washington. One of the first meetings that I had when I first got elected was with Mike Carrier and also with Ward Williams, and I had some concerns with Oklahoma City not attracting diverse conventions to Oklahoma City. Having a convention center hotel will open up that door for us to get more diversity as we talk about convention centers, as we talk about conventions. You mentioned, Councilman Stone, that you would love to have the Southern BAFTAs here. Next year, we'll be able to host the National BAFTAs Convention USA here, which the last time they came, that was in 1991. Having a convention center hotel opens up other national conventions to come to Oklahoma City, so I'm excited. I can tell you, I don't like that it costs, is going to cost us roughly $85 million, but I am excited about the opportunities that this will bring to Oklahoma City. I do want to thank Omni for your commitment of 60, having 60% local subcontractors, and I hope that you all will keep that promise, even though it's not in any of the documents. I really hope that you all will keep that promise. As a city, we always talk about our unemployment rate averaging around 3.3% to 4.5%, but when you look at certain populations in Oklahoma City, for certain communities in Oklahoma City, the unemployment rate is averages 15% or higher. So this will allow people who may have fallen down on their luck to have a chance to succeed. So I really hope that you all will truly market and recruit from those communities that are struggling for employment. So again, I definitely like the 60% local hire for subcontractors, and the simple fact that averaging maybe 450 to 500 jobs, I think is a good thing. But again, I really hope that you all will actively try to recruit from those communities that are struggling. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, it's funny how history has a way of repeating itself over and over. Rick Moore, a friend of mine, gave me a book that I'm reading right now. It's called Nork, The Mayors of Oklahoma City. Right now, I'm in 1960, and Jim Nork has come up with this bold initiative, and we always talk about Ron Nork being a visionary, but Jim Nork was an incredible visionary. And he's proposing this initiative, and the Daily, Oklahoma City Times writes, "This must rake is one of the greatest gambles the city has ever taken." Another paper writes, "This is a wasteful financial extravaganza. It's a betrayal of public confidence." And while I don't believe this is one of the greatest gambles that we've ever taken, I think it's an important point in time. It's a defining moment. It's whether we decide to continue, to move, to improve, to become a first-tier city, and I think that's the steps that we are taking today by voting for this. Another point I'd like to make is, this weekend I was in Greensboro, North Carolina, and my son was there having surgery, and I was playing the role of nurse, kind of taking care of him, and I got some time off Saturday afternoon, and so I went over to their convention center with this hotel, and it has 975 rooms, and I didn't know what to expect. I didn't know whether it's like walking in the scurven on Saturday or Sunday, and there's, you know, a few people at brunch and people milling about in the lobby. There were 3,000 people there for a seven-day conference. 3,000 people. And there were people going to meetings and talking, and it was just incredible. It was electric. And I got to thinking, you know, if 3,000 people spend $500, $600, or $700, seven days, that's a lot of money. And that's what this is about. It's about economic impact. You know, we did $5 billion in new investments with MAPS-1. This is the opportunity to build on that. And so I think that we should embrace this, we should be positive about it, and I'd end by saying that the bold initiative that Jim Nork proposed back in 1960 was to build a pipeline through a reservoir in southeast Oklahoma.
All right, we're on item 9K of the council agenda. Is there a motion? Cast your votes. Passes 7-2.
Quick item, Mr. Mayor, according to the documents, this is in Ward 6, but it's actually in 7 having Ward 7, so I just wanted to point that out.
Our error, you are correct, sir. It is on the line, but it is clearly in Ward 7.
All right, thank you.
I think you were going to catch that.
What's that? How many members?
All right. Item 9L, is there a motion on 9L? Cast your votes. Thanks, everyone. All right, we're on item 9M, and this would modify a letter of intent on the sales tax proposal.
Mayor, if I could, explain this a little bit. When we did the hiring of new police officers a few years ago, when we hired the 100-plus, almost 150 officers that we were in the process of hiring before the recession, there was money in the police department budget, but the police chief wasn't able to hire those officers quick enough, so he used that money on the interim for overtime pay for a program called Viper. And Viper came in in high areas of crime, overtime brought people in and made a significant impact in that area. So what we're doing, until those officers are brought online, using some of that money that's set aside for police officers to do that. So what this resolution would do was, until the officers are in place, use some of that money for that program, and then it would also, for the police department, provide some money to take care of some minimum staffing concerns that we have out there to make sure that when we're, until, again, until all officers are online, we've got some times where we're a little thin on a couple of areas and bringing some overtime officers during those periods of time. And then on the police side of things, it's a similar amount of $1 million, too, and again, until the officers are brought online, this would allow us to minimize the number of fire apparatuses that we are putting out of service for budgetary needs. And so, the $1.2 million, again, short-term, using that money until those officers are brought online would help alleviate that issue.
All right. Is there a motion on 9M? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Mark, your green light's not illuminated for some reason. There it is. Okay. On item 9N, this has to do with the personnel policy.
Yeah, we have some changes to the personnel policy, and Monica Coleman is here to highlight those for us.
Good morning. Monica Coleman, Assistant Personnel Director. About every five to seven years, our Personnel Department likes to take a review of our personnel policies and revise those in the event that there have been maybe state or federal legislative changes, maybe local changes through our municipal ordinances, state charter, and sometimes just generally new personnel administrative issues that need to be addressed. So we've, we have, we're presenting for you here today revised personnel policies that are the result of recommendations from a committee that we put together comprised of representatives from most of our city departments, as well as our city personnel staff and municipal councillor's office. This committee has been meeting since February 1 of 2016, so it's been a very thoughtful process, very thorough, and the copy of the policies that you have in front of you are the result of the recommendations from that committee's process. I'll just note that this process that we've just completed is the same as what we've done for our prior two versions of our personnel policies that were adopted in both 2005 and We've also, this has also gone through an internal review process through the Personnel Department and the Municipal Councillor's Office, so the recommendations that we've presented to you here today incorporate a lot of information from a lot of people, and we're proposing that that be effective today, July 18. I'll just quickly run through some of the more notable changes. There is some cleanup language in there. It just made a lot of sense. And I will let you know that we are going to be posting our policies on our city internet, so all employees can access them electronically. And so, something that we've not done in the past is we've also linked other policies, ordinances, charter, inside those policies, so it's kind of a one-stop shop. Everything should be right there and easily accessible for, as those policies are referenced The first issue that I want to make sure everyone understands is kind of our hierarchy of how our policies apply. So these apply generally to all city employees. Departments and major divisions can also have their own policies, but if there's a conflict in those policies with our personnel policies, personnel policies prevail. Where our personnel policies won't prevail is if there's a conflict with a collective bargaining agreement. So if there's a conflict on an issue between the personnel policies and one of our three collective bargaining agreements, the collective bargaining agreement prevails. So I want to make that very clear to everybody. The first issue that we've amended just slightly is that in the past, we've had hiring preferences for residents of the city of Oklahoma City and the state of Oklahoma. We've removed that. We still have a hiring preference for honorably discharged military veterans, and we have hiring preference for current city employees when all other things are substantially equal. But we feel like removing those preferences will enable us to improve our efforts in recruiting and for diversity and that kind of thing. We've also clarified our process with regard to conducting our criminal background checks, and we've incorporated a process whereby an applicant may provide information to negate the validity and relevance of a particular criminal record when that record may have disqualified them for a position. So we've not had that built into our process in the past. It is now built into our process, and we think that this background process is in conformance with EEOC guidelines, so it's really important for us to have that. We've incorporated our policy on the use of social media and occasions when city employees may speak on behalf of the city. We've had guidelines issued through the Public Information and Marketing Office for a year or so. We've now incorporated those into our policy. I'm not sure what to do with that. Inside our smoking policy, we've had lots of questions over the years about whether or not vaping and e-cigarette devices apply is covered by our smoking prohibition. We've made that very clear now that they do. So where we prohibit smoking in the workplace, that includes vaping and e-cigarette devices. We've revised our customer service incentive program. We've had that in place since the early 90s, I think, and that included an option for departments to recommend a stipend on certain occasions, and that's been discontinued for a while, so we've just kind of brought our policy up to date with the way it's currently administered, and we've eased some of the administrative burdens on city staff with administering that policy, including there's now no expiration date if you get leave credited to you through the customer service program. We want everyone to have the opportunity to use their reward at a meaningful time for them. We've also incorporated additional causes for discipline that have been in place for a long time, but we just wanted to make sure that those have been included in our policies with regard to our firearms and weapons policy, violence and fighting in the workplace, drug and alcohol testing policy, and our driver's license policy. And outside of that, any changes are just grammatical and that kind of thing. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Monica, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We need a motion then to adopt the new personnel policies. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And now we're going to hear from Frank Barnes and talk about the new emergency operations plan, which we do annually.
I have about 50 slides to go through, so.
Don't.
No. I just have. I kept it down to five. I struggle to come up with five. So this is our annual adoption of the Emergency Operations Plan, and the Oklahoma Emergency Management Act of 2003 requires each incorporated jurisdiction to have an emergency operations plan. The Oklahoma City Municipal Code requires the city have an emergency operations plan that is developed and maintained by the Office of Emergency Management and adopted by the city council. The Emergency Management Performance Grant that we receive requires the development, update, and revision of the local jurisdiction's emergency operations plan. It is also simply just a best practice to annually update and revise the emergency operations plan using a collaborative process to revise and update the EOP. And to achieve that collaborative process, we follow FEMA's whole community concept, which is achieved through the city's local preparedness and planning committee, which is comprised of multidisciplinary and multi-agency internal and external stakeholders, including the private sector. So a real quick overview of the EOP is, number one, it's a framework. A lot of people think it's a step-by-step procedural document, and it's not a step-by-step procedural document. Emergencies and disasters are dynamic, and the hazard that caused that event does not read nor follow the plan. The disaster response and recovery relies on resourcefulness, creativity, and improvisation. Number two, it is an all-hazard plan, which means we respond to the result, not to the cause. Many times, we get asked about having specific plans for specific kinds of events, and we point out that we have an all-hazards plan. And the example I use is a structural collapse. If a building falls down and people are trapped inside that building, the response to that structural collapse to rescue those people will be the same regardless of why that building fell down. The EOP places an emphasis on coordination of its activities, or coordination of activities. Under the Emergency Operations Plan, departments and our external partners act under their own authorities to carry out their activities. They don't have to be told what to do. They know what they need to do. Also, under the plan, the internal and external partners are assigned roles and responsibilities, and we made sure that the roles and responsibilities that we assign to them are what they normally do day-to-day. We didn't want to task them with something they don't normally do or that's outside their capabilities. So basically, as a result of that approach, our city departments and our external partners every day are preparing to fill their emergency roles and responsibilities simply by performing their day-to-day tasks and responsibilities. The EOP is active at all times. It does not have to be activated. You'll read in some literature and textbooks and other documents, they talk about you have to activate your EOP. Our EOP is active all the time so that there's no need, there's no delay waiting for it to be activated, and there's no stove piping. And lastly, the EOP is scalable and flexible. It can apply to any kind or any size. We added a Hazard Vulnerability Analysis, what we call HVA Annex, to the plan. I'll explain a little bit more about why we did that in another slide. And because we added that annex, we then had to go into the basic plan, and we had to change the section that was titled Summary, Hazard Analysis Summary, to Hazard Vulnerability Analysis Summary. And then we had to replace and update the tables that appeared in that section. So the Hazard Vulnerability Analysis Annex identifies three categories of hazards. We use the terminology that is contained in current U.S. Department of Homeland Security and Federal Emergency Management Agency documents. So we have natural hazards, and as you can see on the slide, you know, that's our tornadoes, flooding, wildfire, mosquito-borne diseases, and some others. We have adversarial and human-caused, such as cyber incidents, active threat, terrorism, pandemic influenza. And then the category known as technological and accidental, that includes structure fire, hazardous material release, train derailment, dam failure, and airplane crash, and a few others. So the Hazard Mitigation Plan, or the reason we added the Hazard Vulnerability Analysis Annex was because of the 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan update. As we were going into the update process, we were informed by the state and by FEMA that we needed to remove all non-natural hazards from the plan. So that required that we remove adversarial, human-caused, technological, and accidental hazards from the Hazard Mitigation Plan, so that the Hazard Mitigation Plan only addressed natural hazards. This is why we then had to create this Hazard Vulnerability Annex, so that we could cover those other hazards. The federal regulations require only natural hazards in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. That's one of the reasons why those were taken, all the other hazards were taken out. We also learned that FEMA does not look at non-natural hazards during the review process. And lastly, there's no federal grant funding for the mitigation of adversarial, human-caused, technological, and accidental hazards. So the Hazard Vulnerability Annex provides the following benefits. One is it helps us maintain our all-hazards approach to emergency preparedness. It meets the needs of other entities. Over the years, we're contacted by these other entities who want an HVA, so they can use it in their emergency preparedness planning efforts, and we haven't had that. We've always referred to our Hazard Mitigation Plan. And then there was the issue of portability. The previous Hazard Mitigation Plan was about 30 megabytes. The current, 2017 updated one that's currently being reviewed by FEMA is about 19.6 megabytes because of the maps that are attached to it, whereas the Hazard Vulnerability Analysis Annex is less than 1 megabyte. It's actually 0.42, which makes it very easy to transmit that electronically to any of the external partners or any external entities that may need the HVA for their planning purposes. And that is it. Any questions?
I'm sorry. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jim.
Motion.
Oh, sorry.
I would make a motion if we received this.
Okay, although, let's vote, please. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, item P.
Item P is a joint resolution with the Water Utilities Trust to approve a water conservation plan. And the water conservation plan that's before you today is nothing new. It's just been in a number of pieces within the Water Department. When we did the SARDAS settlement last year, we talked about doing a number of conservation measures that we already had in place, and as we're going forward with that, it would be best to consolidate that into one place with a joint resolution between the city and the Water Utilities Trust.
Okay. Any questions for either Water Utilities Trust?
The whole leaves here.
Yeah, or Jim? Okay.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Oh, you can probably answer from back there. It's a silly question, but is Draper, are we still filling that?
No, sir. We stopped pumping the Draper when the power tops go up in some time.
Okay. It looks good. I was just, I was curious. Thank you.
Good question.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept this.
It's been moved and seconded.
Voting, please. It's approved unanimously. Now, the next item, item Q. Do we need executive session?
We do not. We can just approve the resolution.
Okay, so I'll accept a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Voting. It's approved unanimously. Now, item number R, Claims Recommended for Denial. Is there anyone here signed up to speak on that?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? Okay, voting, please. It's approved unanimously. Item number XA, Claims Recommended for Approval.
Yes.
Okay, voting. It's approved unanimously. Items from council. Mark, would you like to start us off? Thank you. Meg? Okay. Todd?
I have an exciting announcement to make. August 5th, starting August 5th, the Marina at Draper Lake is going to start offering a, it'll start out with a small menu of burgers, hot dogs, that type of thing. Originally on, it'll start on weekends, but great place. I was out there visiting the other day, and just a great place to stop, have a hamburger or a hot dog overlooking what I think is the prettiest lake in Oklahoma City, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. I wasn't aware of that. Larry? Ed? James? Okay, pretty quiet today. All right. Yeah. City manager reports.
Today, we have Chris Tathan from ETI to provide our annual citizen survey. Chris has been here, I think, 10 of the last 12 years or something. He might like that, to provide that information. Close to that, anyway.
Thank you, sir.
Well, it's great to be back. I guess I have been here almost 12 years in a row. It feels like I was just here yesterday. What's great about Oklahoma City is you're committed to getting input from your residents on a regular basis. Many communities don't do that, and even if things don't change a lot, sometimes it's good to know what has or hasn't changed, and having that information can be real useful. If you're new and haven't had this presentation before, I think most of you look familiar. ETC Institute, we're based in Kansas City. We have offices in several cities across the United States and overseas. We've surveyed over 2 million people in the United States in the last 10 years, and so a lot of times, we compare how communities are performing based on our national databases. So I'll make some references to that as we go through the presentation today. There's also a full set of comparisons in the report for you to take a look at. Just an example of some of the communities that are in our database for our head-to-head comparisons, they're listed here. We actually, our national averages are based on national surveys that we do. Head-to-head comparisons are based on individual communities, and we actually survey 21 of the 35 largest cities in the United States. For today, I'm just going to walk you through briefly what we did. I know you're familiar, at least most of you are familiar with the survey, give you the conclusions that we've reached, and then just kind of walk you through how we got there. So, the purpose of the survey is really to give you an objective assessment of what residents think related to the quality of city services and their priorities. As you know, most people are busy with their lives and don't have time to come to council meetings or public meetings, so they simply go through their lives expecting services, but oftentimes, you never hear from them. So this type of tool helps you balance what you hear at public meetings with what the average resident really thinks, so that way you can incorporate that as part of your decision-making process. It also helps you get input for priorities and also measure how things have trended over time. This year's survey was done very similarly to the surveys we've done in previous years. The one difference that we did do to make it more useful for each of the council members is this year, the sample was stratified by ward. So we made sure we got at least 150 respondents per ward. In the past, sometimes we've had more responses from one word than another. This year, it's pretty uniform, so that way, if you're interested, you'll actually see the results for the particular group of people you're serving. As far as the major findings this year, the real big finding that I should have just put in bright red letters is not a lot changed. In some ways, that's really good, because this was a very turbulent year with the national elections and a lot of changes at the national level. Many communities saw significant decreases this past year. You actually stayed about the same. Your overall perceptions of customer service and your overall satisfaction with the city are among the best in the nation. You do a fairly equitable job of meeting the expectations regardless of where residents live, but frankly, your street issue, as you'll see, continues to be a major concern. It hasn't made, hasn't changed much since I was here a year ago. As far as the reasons I make these conclusions is, first off, is just the way people rate a number of the things, like a city is a place to live, work, raise children. We ask residents to rate a number of things on a five-point scale. Fours and fives tend to be good, very good, excellent, satisfied, and negatives are poor, the ones and twos, and they're shaded in red. And you can see on this chart that most of the areas that were assessed rate very well. One of my key indicators on here is a city that's moving in the right direction, because you typically only hear from the 13% of the people who don't like what you're doing or think you're moving in the wrong direction. You'll notice that 77% of people actually feel favorable. So for every person that's negative, there's about six people out there that actually think the city is moving in the right direction, and that's a good place to be. In addition, we look at things, just the overall quality of life, image, appearance of the city, but this is one where you'll see the overall quality of services provided by the city. Only 11% or 1 in 9 people are dissatisfied. You probably, again, hear from them, 57% or nearly six times that actually give positive ratings. So all in all, the city's doing a good job. I'm going to show you the trends in just a few more slides. But when it comes to the major categories of city services, you'll notice that the three lowest-rated ones all have to do with transportation. Traffic flow, public transit, and of course, condition of streets, which only 9% of people gave positive ratings. You can see in your public safety services, your utilities and parks, you're doing pretty well, but it's the transportation-related ones that you've struggled now for several years. When you see how you stack up to other communities, this is one of the great things about coming to Oklahoma City, and I think one of the benefits that you receive from really listening to your residents year after year after year is that you do a good job. I mean, at the end of the day, the city is a place to live, is a place to work, is a place to raise children, is a place to retire. How well you're planning for growth and the overall quality of city services sets the standard. You can see significant gaps. For example, when it comes to the overall quality of services provided, you're 12 points above the national average at 57 compared to 45%, and you can see as a place to live, work, raise children, or retire, you rate significantly above other communities. And planning for growth is one that's a challenge when a lot of things are going on, and there you'll see that you rate almost 20 points above the national average. So those are some of the city's strengths. You'll see when it comes to the delivery of services, you've got a culture of excellence when it comes to customer service. You can see you rate 21 points above the national average, and I think that's a real credit to your employees, if the individual people who are answering the phones and being responsive to residents when they interact with them, that's rare in large cities, which is why you can see you're so much higher rated than the average community. But, as you work your way to the bottom of the list, you'll see, and this is for large cities, this isn't the national average for all cities. The average large city is at 35% for communities with more than 250,000. You're at 9%, which is one of the lowest rated. So of the 21 of the 35 largest cities that we have, you're one of the lowest in that group, so certainly some opportunities to do better there. When it comes to utilities and your solid waste services, again, these oftentimes impact people weekly, daily, and you can see in all areas, you're doing significantly better than other communities. So, customer service strengths, your public safety strengths, but the transportation and maintenance issues continue to be areas where you lag behind. The other thing that you'll notice in the report is we have a lot of maps. For today's presentation, I just put one on here, which is the overall satisfaction with city services, and you can see that it's mixed but generally leans favorable. In other words, you don't see any areas of the map where the respondents are red or orange, which would indicate that the average person there was dissatisfied. That neutral rating on a five-point scale really means you're meeting expectations, you're doing okay. Anytime you see blue, you're really exceeding expectations, you're doing better than people expect. So all in all, citywide, but the big area that's keeping you from seeing that all turn blue is the maintenance and transportation-related issues. When you see some of the trends compared to last year, this is why I said upfront that there wasn't much change. We evaluate over 80 items year after year, and only six items changed by 5% or more, and you can see there were three that went up and three that went down. Interestingly, all three that went up had to do, or two of the three that went up, yeah, it was all three that went up, had to do with public safety-related issues. You can see perceptions of safety walking in neighborhoods after dark, your local traffic laws, availability of information about police programs were all improved. Areas that decreased significantly were the traffic flow, availability of information about parks programs, and your aquatic facilities and programs. But for the most part, things didn't change a lot compared to a year ago.
Could I ask a question and make a distinction? The second item under notable decreases, availability of information, that's different than the quality of
Oh, absolutely.
Of programs. It's just the availability that we
Just the information.
Thank you.
In fact, the quality didn't change significantly outside for the aquatic facilities. When it comes to the top priorities moving ahead, condition of streets, I think you know this, what's great is I hear coming in today that you actually got a lot of things in place to potentially raise the funding, so I think you're doing the right things, and until you probably get that funding going and out in the streets, it's going to be difficult to address this issue, but you can see streets are at the top of the list. Eight out of 10 people picked that as one of their top choices, and more people picked it as their first choice than the combined top three of anything else. And you can see, followed by traffic flow, police, parks, and recreation, but clearly the maintenance is the issue. And when we put it into our analysis to help you identify, well, given the level of importance and how well you're doing, what are the top priorities? And this is a little different, and the reason we do this is if nobody cared about the service, you shouldn't prioritize it because no one's going to notice, or you need to educate them that it is important. And you can see streets, conditions, traffic flow at the top of the list, followed by public transit and code enforcement, but clearly, the top three all have to do with your transportation system. And this is for people who are more visual learners. It's the same data, just from left to right, the importance is plotted, so things on the right side are more important than those on the left, and the satisfaction is plotted on the vertical axis, so things on the bottom are lower rated than those at the top. And what you're looking for is there anything that's really important to folks, but you're not doing as well as. You can see condition of streets is in the bottom right quadrant, and you can see follow-up traffic is next. And the other items are fairly well-distributed based on expectations, but those are the two that are really out of line. Coming back to our specific improvements by topic, in addition to the overall ratings, we also did this kind of within categories. And you can see within code enforcement, if you just want to improve code enforcement, this isn't overall city satisfaction, you'd focus on cleaning up junk and debris on private property, mowing and cutting of weeds, and the enforcement of exterior maintenance of residential property. Those are the three critical factors in code enforcement. Within maintenance, it's your major streets and your neighborhood streets, along with pavement markings. And with parks and recreation, it's walking and biking trails, the quality of parks near folks' homes and their neighborhoods, maintenance of parks, and the availability of information, which is one area that did decrease. So by doing better in that area, you may see overall satisfaction with parks increase next year. But to summarize, really not a lot of changes this year. This is kind of like going into getting a well-health physical with your doctor, and you walk out and say you're doing just like you were the last time. You're doing just fine. And so the city continues to set the standard for customer service. The city continues to set the standard when it comes to overall satisfaction, but you really will need to address the issue of street maintenance, and I think you've got a plan in place to potentially fund that, which I think means you're in the right direction. So with that, I don't know if there are any questions, but overall, that's what we found this year.
Any questions for this? Yes, Ed, please. So I noted on the one slide that we're ahead of the national average in just basically every category, except then it says quality of life, and we're behind. That tells me that you might be missing something.
Yeah, there's other factors that impact that.
And I think what you might be missing is education.
That's what I was going to say.
And I think that perhaps, I know that that's not directly the responsibility of the City Council, but it would be very interesting if you started to include that, because I think it might give a more well-rounded, comprehensive picture of how people view quality of life in Oklahoma City.
Sure. And that's actually what we find in a number of communities.
And I think what you might be missing is education.
That's what I was going to say.
And I think that perhaps, I know that that's not directly the responsibility of the city council, but it would be very interesting if you started to include that. Because I think it might give a more well-rounded, comprehensive picture of how people view quality of life in Oklahoma City.
Sure. And that's actually what we find in a number of communities where that's the case, we'll find that education is a concern. And that's kind of outside the city's parameters directly, as you say, but it's an indicator that could be added to the survey's overall questions next year. We have benchmarking data for that as well.
Thank you. Ed, I also noticed one of the lower ratings that we received was it's a great place, or it's a good, whatever the question said, to raise a child. And I think that goes with the education issue that, again, not just Oklahoma City, but public school systems unfortunately throughout Oklahoma and Oklahoma City are experiencing. I've got a question for our city manager. Could we put together a resolution between now and September that would show our commitment to, assuming that the upcoming maps and our GO bond elections are passed, that our goal is to improve the quality of our streets? Or maybe we could say that once these two programs are fully implemented, our goal is to achieve an overall PCI rating of, I don't know, you let me know what the percentage should be. Higher would be better, like 80. Not just to get there, but then we would maintain our streets going forward, and then maybe each year, we could revote on that resolution as a commitment by the city council. I mean, would that be possible?
Of course it's possible.
I have one other comment, David. One other thing that's striking about this, and we've talked about this before, the national average on citizens that are satisfied with the quality of streets in their city is 35%. We're 9%, so we're the lowest. But if you, there's basically no city where people think their streets are great, right? So you can spend as much as money as you want to do, you can try and get your PCI wherever you want to get, but you're not going to get to a situation where the majority of the citizens are satisfied with Oklahoma City streets.
That's true, but that's, the streets are pulling us down.
I understand that. But I'm saying, if you just improve like crazy and get to the national average, only 1/3 of your citizens are going to be satisfied.
Yeah, I agree. And I think our situation is so complex just due to our size. If we could at least get the arterial streets, you know, improved, and then hopefully at some point in time, get more of the neighborhood streets, that would go along right. I think it would actually help overall ratings in other areas, too, because I think to some degree, our traffic flow is inhibited to, at some degree, as a result of the quality of the streets. You know, we have to avoid certain areas where there's, you know, a street's shut down because of repairs or, you know. So I think it would help, and many of our ratings, plus it would help the citizens say, hey, we're being responsive to their greatest concern that they've identified to us, and we're trying to address those concerns.
Is the individual ward data broken out in the notebook?
If we have not done that, we will. I don't know if we've provided that yet, but if not, we will. We'll provide that as an appendix, and you'll just be able to see all the wards and then the overall side by side. So I'll make sure that we get that.
I would like, I would like to see the map that shows where that 7% live at that are satisfied with the condition of the city's kids.
I can tell you where they're not, Todd.
Oh, I know. I know where the other 93% are. I'm just curious where those 7% live.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Jim?
Mr. Vice Mayor, the last thing on the agenda is the sales and use tax collections for July. The sales tax was up a percent and a half. It's a little bit under, positive, we'll take it, but it's a little bit under what our projection is. The use tax was actually up quite a bit. It was up to 21% over last year, and that's primarily because of the collection on the Amazon internet sales. And again, that shows up under use tax.
That's great. Well, thank you very much. And I don't believe we have any citizens to be heard, so I think we're adjourned.